Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight at our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Anderson, Gray.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Glad.
Here. Thank you. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance after which if you would please remain standing for the invocation which will be offered by Robert Raschke from the Grace Lutheran Church.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty God, we stand in humble gratitude for your many blessings, for the beauty of the region in which we live, for the faithful service of those who keep us safe from danger and from fire, and for our community of friends and neighbors, and for the many liberties and freedoms we share that allow us to be together. We are thankful for our leaders from the various cities and counties who dedicate their lives to the good of others. Father, we are thankful for the businessmen and women, education leaders and volunteers of our community who are amongst us here tonight. We are thankful for their passion and dedication to their field and the benefits that we all share from their hard work. Lord, we ask that you bless this meeting, give those present wisdom and discernment to carry out the work ahead of them. Father, we ask for safe travels home at the end of our time together. These things we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three is a Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by a motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the Joint Cities Meeting of October 23, 2017, the Working Lunch, and the Special City Council Meeting of November 2, 2017. B, Treasurer's Report. Council may wish to consider the Treasurer's Report for October showing cash and investments as of October 31, 2017. Good evening, Joyce.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Joyce Stroshine, Chief Financial Officer for the city. Tonight I'm presenting the Treasurer's Report for the month of October 2017. Total cash and cash equivalents represent 88 percent of the city's monies totaling $35,617,285. Total long-term investments represent 12 percent of the city's monies totaling $4,666,422. For a total cash, cash equivalents, and long-term investments of $40,283,708. This amount is up $158,539 for the month of October. On page two of the report, I have highlighted key receipts for the month. Franchise fee, Intermountain Gas, $29,069. This amount is up 5.87 percent from the prior year. Transit grant, State of Idaho, $50,568. Cable franchise fees, $52,636. This amount is down 12.65 percent from the prior year. Transit grant federal, $96,810. Franchise fee, Idaho Power, $127,663. This amount is up 5.51 percent from the prior year. Idaho state liquor tax, $133,347. This amount is up 6.7 percent from the prior year. Idaho state sales tax revenue sharing, $611,296. This amount is up 3.83 percent from the prior year. Idaho state highway user fees, $644,741. This amount is up 1.12 percent from the prior year. And airport grant, $1,490,709. The remaining section details the net change in cash and long-term investments for the city. On page three of the report, I report on the trust funds. Total cash and cash equivalents for the trust funds are $1,185,139. Total long-term investments, $4,540,512. For a total cash, cash equivalent, and long-term investments of $5,725,651. Total cash receipts for the month are $32,542. Disbursements total, $57,155. And a net change in long-term investments of a decrease of $33,546. For an overall decrease of $58,159 for the month. Page four of the report lists all funds' cash balances with a net change for the month, and I have highlighted the general fund which ended the month at $6,827,439. Page five of the report is discussion and analysis, and that's presented for your review. And page six of the report is the five-year trend of cash balances. This report continues to reflect a strong cash position. We have four negative fund balances, and those are covered by pending grant receivables or a pending contract receivable. And based on my preliminary year and reports, it appears that our general fund will build reserves for fiscal year '17. Our reserve measurement for fiscal year 2016 indicated we are at 85 percent of our reserve goal. I believe we will come close to achieving our established reserve level to meet our cash flow needs and to be prepared for unexpected changes in our revenue stream. This policy the city enables the city to maintain a consistent service level for our citizens. And this concludes my report.
Do you have any questions?
I have one question. Page two on cash receipts.
Yes.
Towards the bottom, you have almost a quarter of a million dollars in miscellaneouses. Is that just?
Let's see where you're at here.
It's just above your la-- well, it's just below your second-to-last green box.
We get a lot of small amount items in. And so instead of listing all those individually, we kind of collaborate and put those in. If you want more detail on that item.
No, it's just a multitude of smaller numbers.
It's a multitude of very small receipts that come in. In the month of October, it's a quarterly payment month for us, and so we usually have a lot of receipts that come in in that month.
Okay. Thank you, Joyce. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
What's the total projected reserve requirement for this city?
Last year, when we did the reserve review after the conclusion of fiscal year '16, we should have had 8 million in there, and we were at 6.8 million. And so we were looking for another 1.2 to get us up to 100 percent. And that put us at 85 percent. And so it's always based on a 25 percent of the current year's expenditures and any capital requirements that we have for a fund. And so in our particular case, it's usually just 25 percent of the expenditure budgeted for the year, for the current year. And so each year it could move up if your expenditure total budgeted grows. But that's to me. Our major remittances for our revenue stream for the general fund come in January, so you have October, November, December, and a good part of January to cover before you receive your major revenue stream.
I appreciate that explanation. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
C, Childcare Advisory Committee reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Laura Thomas to continue her service as a member of the Childcare Advisory Committee. Ms. Thomas's term will begin December 4, 2017, and will expire December 4, 2021. D, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Kay Carbridge to continue her service as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Ms. Carbridge's term will begin December 4, 2017, and will expire December 4, 2019.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion by Johnston and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. We have-- we'll move to Agenda Item Four, Communication and Proclamations. We do have one proclamation, and that proclamation will be for Nurse Practitioner Week. But before we do that, I see a few scouts out there, so I'm going to ask one of them to stand up. Are you with them?
No, they're nursing students.
Who? What?
They're nursing students.
Troop 305.
Well, I don't want you to stand up and tell me that. If you're 14, then you can.
It's on time.
Yeah. So I need one of you three to stand up. You in the middle, right there, you. Stand up, tell us where you're from.
Troop.
What troop are you in?
Oh, we're Troop 305.
305. Where's Troop 305 at?
Um, the Alameda area.
Alameda area. Fantastic. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Are you in Troop 305?
Thank goodness he said that, Mayor.
Yeah.
He didn't hear that, but he said it.
He's saying, "Thank goodness." Are there any other scouts out there that I'm missing? Okay. Thank you for being here, you guys. We appreciate you being here. Now, we do have a proclamation, and Councilmember Moore will read that proclamation.
This is a proclamation recognizing Nurse Practitioner Week. Whereas nurse practitioners serve as trusted frontline providers of health care for patients in our state, and nurse practitioners are advanced practice-registered nurses who have advanced clinical education and training, building upon their initial registered nurse preparation, and whereas there are 234,000 licensed nurse practitioners in the United States providing primary, acute, and specialty care to patients of all ages and walks of life, and whereas nurse practitioners diagnose, treat, and prescribe medications and other treatments to patients through a caring, patient-centered, holistic model of care, and whereas leading government and policy entities, including the National Academy of Medicine, National Council of State Boards of Nursing, National Governors Association, and Federal Trade Commission, have taken notice of the benefits of nurse practitioner full practice authority and have endorsed such a regulatory model. There now for Brian C. Glad, Mayor of the city of Pocatello, does hereby proclaim November 12 through the 18, 2017, as Nurse Practitioner Week in Pocatello in recognition of the countless contributions that nurse practitioners have made over the past half-century and will continue to make to the health and well-being of citizens of our state.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you want a picture of us? A selfie?
My arms aren't on.
Do you want to stand up here, see?
Yeah, let's stand up here.
You have one of us on yourself. That's not-- you can't beat that, right?
Well, I'll hold this. Am I holding?
There you go. I got a few more.
Super.
That is a thorn between two roses.
Did Jim photobomb that?
I tried to get it to you, but it didn't.
Well, I'm Melody Weaver. I'm on faculty at ISU, a family nurse practitioner. And my colleague Gina Clarkson, who is a neonatal nurse practitioner, also on faculty. And we would like to thank the mayor and the council for recognizing all the hard work that we do and the contribution. Pocatello itself probably has close to 150 nurse practitioners. And I would almost bet that a number of you in the room could say that that's who your clinician is. And so we want to thank you for recognizing what we do. And just remember, hug a nurse practitioner. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On December 7 at 1:00 p.m., City Council Liaison Working Lunch. December 7 at 6:00 p.m., regular council meeting. December 14, 9:00 a.m. will be a study session. Hey, we're losing one scout that didn't speak up.
You know why he's leaving.
Yeah, now we know why he's out. All right. Other events. The annual leaf collection continues through December 1. Leaves must be placed in compostable bags, not boxes or plastic bags. Leaves will be picked up on a regular collection day. City Council Recreation Area.
City Creek.
City Creek Recreation-- I did that earlier, too. City Creek Recreation Area gates are now closed to motorized access until approximately May 15, 2018. November 23 and 4, city offices will be closed to observe the Thanksgiving holiday. Garbage and recycle pickups for Thursday and Friday will be one day behind. The Community Recreation Center will be closed on Thanksgiving, but will be open from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Friday, November 24. November 24, Holiday Celebration and Lights Parade in Old Town. November 25, 27th Annual Christmas in the nighttime skies at Bennett County Event Center at 5:00 p.m. November 29 through December 2, Festival of Trees at the Stevens Performing Arts Center. And we would like to wish Highland High School good luck in their state championship game Friday night that starts at 5:30 p.m. They will be playing quarterly. Did I miss anything, council? All right. Thank you. Then we'll move on to Agenda Item Six is a public hearing. Fiscal year 2018 program of projects transit. This time has been set aside for council to receive comments from the public regarding approval of the following grant-assisted projects for public transit. A, Federal Transit Administration Rural Idaho Transportation Department Grants, 5111 and 5111F and 5339 in the amount of $889,743 for fiscal year 2018. Required local match is $393,486. No city funds are used for the rural program. B, Federal Transit Administration Urban Grant, 5307 in the amount of $1,324,134 for fiscal year 2018, with a local share of $706,034. 5310 Urban Capital Grant in the amount of $305,000 with the local share of $76,250. Local share is available in the 2018 public transit budget. And C, authorize the public transit director to make necessary amendments and modifications related to the grants subject to legal department review. I declare the public hearing open.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dave Hunt, Public Transit Director. As has been said, this is our program of projects for fiscal year 2018 for both the urban and the rural public transit programs. These sections that have been mentioned are under the United States Code, Part 49, dealing with public transportation. This is our opportunity to receive comments from the public regarding these proposed programs. You will be seeing more of this in detail as we go along as the respective grants come before you and any expenditures that exceed the threshold, $50,000 threshold for capital acquisition. We have not received any comments that I am aware of through the webpages or email or postal correspondence of this type. Questions are coming.
Councilman, thank you.
Thank you.
Then we will look for--
I have one question, if I may, Dave. With the challenges facing the U.S. government with budget constraints and so forth, do you anticipate any challenges to these large numbers?
I don't have a crystal ball, councilman, but I can just say that in the 30-plus years that I've been involved, that the federal grants have been very consistent. There's been a lot of support on both sides of the aisle because of the fact that mobility and access to public and other services is such a high priority, particularly for persons with disabilities and senior citizens. So I don't anticipate that we'll see a big change, but who knows?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We would look for any testimony of those supporting the application. Any testimony of those uncommitted to the application. Any testimony of those opposed to the application.
Nikki Tason, 4963 Yellowstone, Chubbick. I'm opposed to this because our government is in debt to even foreign nations. There's low ridership consistently, and also this department does, is literally consistently in the red. And we, the people, end up paying for it over and over and over. And it also is in competition with local businesses who would like to improve and expand but can't due to the increases in taxes, license fees, business license fees, insurance fees. And when you cut out programs for people in need, say, I think it was Route F out south, yet keep the route out to Pine Ridge Mall open, you know, you're not playing to the fair needs of those here. And also, it states that no local funds, city funds, will be used. Well, it says that there is a match, so where does that come from? From the local-- What is the local entity that those funds come from if it's not the city? And so, I mean, our government already this year, at the federal level, stated they're thinking about shutting our government down again, which to me is an act of treason. Shut down programs like this that are gross waste of public funds, that compete against local businesses. It's socialism. Thank you. In the name of Jesus Christ, you took an oath under the Constitution.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Okay, then Dave, would you like to respond to any of those? Okay, then I declare the public hearing closed. Council, decide before you had a wish to proceed.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President Brown.
I move that we authorize you and the city attorney to sign and pin related contract awards and authorize the public transit director to execute the grants and any necessary amendments on Agenda Item Number Six, A, B, and C.
Second. Moore. We have a motion by Council President Brown and a second by Moore. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Seven, Public Hearing Right-of-Way Vacation of Portion of Wedgeway. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request from Ron Malouli of Juniper Hills Country Club and Joseph Jensen, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, to vacate and abandon the public interest in a portion, in a part of right-of-way located on Wedgeway and an adjacent public utility easement at the end of Wedgeway. Staff recommends approval of the request subject to conditions. I declare the public hearing open. Council, before we continue, have there been any expert communication?
I walked through the lot. Mr. Private Brown.
You walked through the lot?
I've hit some errant golf balls and hit all the lots.
I probably have done the same. Okay, thank you. Then we would look for--
We have one of you.
We now know that we can't golf and we like to walk.
The applicant. That's staff.
That's staff. That's staff?
That's staff. But applicant needs to be first, Matt.
Okay. Okay. Applicant is--
Yes.
Applicant is--
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Mitchell Gere with Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, 600 East Oak. I think we presented a fairly detailed application packet. The reason for the request is, as was just stated, errant golf balls, and so we're trying to shift some of those building lots a little closer in so that it provides a little bit more functional course and hopefully doesn't really limit anything that needs to be provided by the public. And so we would request that you support the request of Juniper Hills Country Club and approve the vacation as requested. Thank you.
Is this, in theory, going to stop windows from being broken?
Hopefully.
Okay. Any other questions for--
No.
Kay? Matt?
Yeah.
We were just giving you more steps, Matt.
Thank you. I'm almost at 10. I'm about 10,000, so.
Very good.
For the year?
Okay. I created that. I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Matt Lewis, Senior Planner with the city. Wedgeway is an existing street approximately 237 feet in length ending in a cul-de-sac located in Porton of Golf Estates subdivision. The street currently provides access to lots 7 and 8, Block 4, Porton of Golf Estates. Neither lot has structures built on them. In conjunction with the vacation requests, the lots are being replatted in order to make safer golf, safer play for golfers and future property owners building on the two lots. Existing infrastructure, including sanitary sewer line, water services, and hydrant, will be relocated as deemed appropriate. The only comments received by city department representatives and public agencies were provided by engineering, and such are noted in Exhibit 1. Just note a complete legal description of the area. Our request for vacation was reviewed by the city surveyor, of which a copy is provided in the file. The site map of the area is within your files. Notification by certified mail to property owners within a 300-foot radius of the subject property has been accomplished according to signed mailing list affidavit. No comments were received as of the drafting of the staff report, which was on 11/6/17, and no other comments have been received since. With that, staff recommends approval with the conditions that are outlined in Exhibit 1. That concludes my presentation.
Clark, have we received any of this?
No, sir.
Thank you. Any questions for Matt? Thank you, Matt. And I would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application.
Nikki Tason, 4963 Yellowstone, Chubbick. I just have some questions of, with this piece of property, will they be doing any reimbursement to the city, i.e. we, the people, for that property, as well as the developments on that property, the road, the utilities, things like that?
Okay, thank you. Any others uncommitted to the application? Any opposed to the application? Okay. Mitch, would you like to respond at all? Okay. Then we will move ahead to, I declare the public hearing closed. Council, decide before you had a wish to proceed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Bray.
I move that we grant the right-of-way vacation on a portion of Wedgeway, and it be granted according to the conditions contained in the staff report.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Bray and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Moore.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eight, Short Platte 14th Hole subdivision. Ron Malouli of Juniper Hills Country Club, Joseph Jensen, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, have submitted an application to subdivide approximately 0.78 acres into three lots. One lot is not buildable. Located at the end of Wedgeway, the subdivision is to be known as 14th Hole subdivision. Staff recommends approval of the request subject to conditions outlined in the staff report.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the request with the conditions.
Second. We have a motion by Moore and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Nine, Final Platte Mountain West Division 1. Cal Kunkel, represented by Cornerstone Geometrics LLC, has submitted a request to subdivide approximately 9.889 acres into 91 residential and two common lots. The property is located at 4259 Hawthorne Road within a residential, commercial, professional zoning district. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the preliminary platte at their meeting on September 4, 2017, and recommend approval with conditions. Staff recommends approval of the final platte, subject to conditions contained in the staff report.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve this final platte, subject to conditions.
Second. We have a motion by Johnston and a second by Moore. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
No.
Thank you. Agenda Item 10, Exceptional Request, Sell of Fireworks in December. Council may wish to consider a request from Family Fun Party, represented by Brenda Pollard, for an exception to City Code 15.10.100, time of sell of fireworks, to allow the sale of fireworks at Family Fun Party, December 26 through 30, 2017, from the hours of 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Fire Department staff recommends approval of the request, subject to conditions.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the request with conditions.
Second. We have a motion by Moore and a second by Moore. Comes to Pyro. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Did you want clarification of when the fireworks?
Yes, we would, and with that, thank you for reminding me, with that reminder that you can light fireworks off only on New Year's Eve and New Year's Day. We're not interested in you lighting fireworks off the rest of the year. Just those two, two days will be great. We appreciate that, but please go and, and have a lot of fun with those fireworks. Thank you for reminding me of that. We'll move on to Agenda Item 11, Surplus Declaration and Sell of Shelving Equipment at Marshall Public Library. Counsel may wish to declare 16 spinners that hold paperback books as surplus and allow library staff to sell the spinners to other libraries that have shown interest in the spinners. No other city department has shown interest in obtaining the spinners, and other libraries need shelving, needing shelving will benefit from the equipment.
Mr. Mayor.
Matt, Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, we declare surplus at the Marshall Public Library of the shelving and that we authorize the sale.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston.
Comment, please?
Sure.
I think it's really important for the council and the audience to realize that the need to dispose of these shelves comes as a result of a $30,000 donation from the Friends of the Library to put in new shelving in our library. And if you haven't seen it, go by. It's really a great addition, opening up the library a lot.
It was amazing how many, how much room these spinners were taking, and so it really is nice. It's beautiful, so go take a look at it. A motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 12, Waiver Request for 2017 Summer Line Utility Account Charges Bannock County Soccer Fields. Counsel may wish to consider a request to waiver outstanding charges related to the 2017 Summer Line Utility Account for the irrigation of soccer fields located at the Bannock County Event Center. This request has been made by the Bannock County Commissioners for the outstanding balance of $27,386.24 on the account.
Nobody wants to do it, huh? Mr. Mayor.
Counsel President Brown.
I move that we waive these outstanding charges.
Second. We want to put an amendment, an addendum on there or an amendment stating that if they do not connect to the county well.
I'd be good with that.
Okay, so.
I'll, let me start my motion over.
Please.
Counsel President Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve this waiver of outstanding charges, subject to the county connecting to the wellness well, wellness complex well, for their water service.
Second.
Did you want that date? A date on there, sir?
By next service cycle. I don't know what you.
By next?
Spring.
Spring.
Yeah.
Spring, 2018.
This would be waived, but if they do not do that, then the bill would be due.
As I understand the motion, that is correct. That's, that's how I would interpret that motion. Okay, we have a motion by Brown and a second by Johnston. Are you clear with the motion, Connie?
She's clear.
She's clear. She's always clear. Could you please call the roll?
Brown.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 13, Memorandum of Understanding Ready. Counsel may wish to approve a Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, and an annual membership cost with Regional Economic Development Eastern Idaho ready, in the amount of $30,000, subject to legal department review. The MOU outlines the purpose and principles of READY, to help create and keep preliminary jobs in the area, diversify the local economy, and provide stable, stability for local business.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the MOU.
Second. We have a motion by Moore and a second by Brown.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think we need to clarify a couple of things related to this. This is, seems to have become one of the more controversial things in our communities for those of you that are connected to economic development. And this was brought forth three, three and a half years ago, under a different type of approach, to replace our existing economic development organization, which didn't feel right. It wasn't the right approach. This is a different direction, if you will, a READY 2.0, that will work on marketing our region and connecting our communities in Eastern Idaho in a way that hasn't really happened before. We've kind of all been on our own when it comes to economic development. And I, and I think there comes a synergy and, and the ability to, to work off each other's strengths to do something like this. I know that there's great concern about the impact that this would have on Bannock Development, and I, I don't see it as, as a direct competitor. It's a, it's, it's a layered effect, where you have an overarching organization that markets the region and then funnels those leads to the, the local entities. And with that, the MOU talks about, and it's a blanket membership. So all, all communities fit under that umbrella, but all the communities aren't necessarily the same. So you might have a community that doesn't have an economic development organization, and, and they're going to play a little bit different role in that community than they would with, like a city of Pocatello or a city of Chubak, where we already have an economic development organization. I really view this as putting our economic development effort on turbocharge. There's some concern with the city of Chubak having an economic development position. We're looking at that at the city of Pocatello, and I know that there are those that view that as a separation, but it really is adding some, some juice to the overall economic development effort. I think we can do a much better job, and I think we're on track. If we continue down the path, working together and holding each other accountable for this, I think we're on the track to become a premier area for the state when it comes to economic development. I don't see this as a threat. I certainly see it as, as a real benefit to us going forward.
Mr. Mayor, I have no problem, as Mr. Brown has pointed out, in terms of the direction that READY is going. I don't have any problem with READY serving in a marketing role for communities in Southeast Idaho, including Bannock County. I am concerned about the duplication of effort. We need to increase our effectiveness and avoid wasteful time and taxpayer money on economic development. I'm concerned about the duplication. Retention and expansion efforts in Bannock County should continue to be conducted by Bannock Development, in my estimation. And we need to clearly define roles, and I see duplication with this agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Seems that we're pontificating here. And I, and I concur with the previous two council members. Approximately three years ago, as I said here, there was an agenda item that came before the council, and I brought up my concerns about the lack of scope of work and a defined deliverables to that agenda item. We now know that, due to that, it has cost the city an additional $1 million. I, as I've discussed this and talked about, I've asked, again, for a defined scope of work. And we were on our seats tonight, and I will quote from this letter, and it can be submitted, is that, this is from the Chamber of Commerce, the city of Pocatello. "We also feel that the creation of separate economic development groups within each governmental entity and the expenditure fund with another economic development agency is a duplication of work that is done by Bannock Development Corporation and is an inefficient use of taxpayers' money within those communities." So, Mr. Mayor, I'm glad you clarified in our clarification meeting that you are on board and support this READY agreement at this time, so that's why I wanted to share with you.
So my, my understanding, if we're gonna, still, I have a couple of questions, though. You said that it's cost the city $1 million. What are you referring to?
Talking about TO engineering and regarding to the WPC, when they wanted to do engineering drawings, drawings, and then came back and told us that, well, that, in fact, we paid an additional dollar to get further drawings to move forward with the contractor and such as that.
I'm not, I'm not sure what that has to do with.
You can research it.
With economic development.
Well, what it has to do with an agenda item that we're discussing here, that I, 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 I just want, I mean, without, without deliverables and direct direction for what the roles will be and how they're going to be accountable for it, then we just continue doing as we've done in the past, so I, but I do concur with the statements previously stated.
Well, and as we discussed in that meeting earlier, the role of READY would be more of a marketing role and working with Bannock Development opposed to competing with them, and I think that's what Counsel President Brown was referring to, as much as anything, is we're, is, it's not two competing entities, it's a, they, they'll be working hand in hand together, as I understand it, so.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the concern about the duplication of services, but ultimately, we can talk about holding somebody accountable, but it's this body that does that. If we have the backbone, if we have the, if we want things to, to be better, then it's our responsibility, as elected officials representing the city, to stand up and make that happen. And so, in, in the discussion of making sure that there's not duplication of services and that we hold the organizations that work for our good, that we spend taxpayer money on, it's our responsibility to make sure that, that we're getting a return on our investment.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion by Moore and a second by Brown. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Johnston.
No.
Moore.
No.
Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item 14, Public Hearing Modifications to the Sign Code. This time has been set aside.
Excuse me. Do we have a slide presentation?
Yes.
Okay. We'll, we'll need to get that set up, Mayor. Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
We've had a lot of people.
We'll go ahead and take a minute for technical difficulties.
Do you want to read that while they're setting it up?
Yeah, I can do that. Agenda Item 14, Public Hearing Modifications to the Sign Code. This time has been set aside for counsel to hear comments from the public concerning changes to municipal code 15.20, sign code. The proposed changes are to sections 15.20.240 and will prohibit any new off-premise billboard signs except through annexation or by removing an existing off-premise billboard sign in exchange for a new sign, requiring a conditional use permit for a new off-premise billboard sign. Additionally, off-premise, off-premise billboard signs will only be allowed on specific corridors that are linked to the state highway system as defined in the proposed amendments. Off-premise billboard signs shall not be located closer than 1,000 feet to a residential or residential, commercial, professional zoning district, and change in, and change in sign type from static to electronic is prohibited. An ordinance has been prepared for council's consideration under Agenda Item 15A.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes.
Would you allow me just a little latitude?
I, yes. Before I open a public hearing, I would do that.
Yeah, yeah. I know this isn't the regular order of things, but I, I'd like to have a discussion to see if we have this public hearing or not. I think, first of all, I want to express my appreciation to staff. They have jumped back and forth for this council on this subject. I really appreciate that. And trying to define exactly what we don't even know what we want. But there are some things that, over the last few days, as I've looked deeper into this, that I'm not sure I have the answers to, and as a result, I'm not sure that we are really prepared to pass this ordinance tonight without those answers. And so I'm, I'm wondering if the mood of my fellow council members would be willing to not move on this tonight and, and make sure that we're addressing everything. I don't want to pass an ordinance that we might have a problem with or that we aren't able to enforce adequately. We're gonna do it, I want it to do it right. And so, would, would you be willing to allow this to go into next month? We have a moratorium at the end of the month, and I know that that's, that's why we're here at this agenda item. But if, if the, those that are in the sign business would be willing to give a little good faith in me, and, and I'm willing to give a little good faith, if you'll not file on December 1, 10,000 applications for permits, I'm willing to step back for a minute and say, okay, let's take a second look at this and make sure we have it right. If you're willing to make that commitment, I'm willing to go that route. So, and I don't know how we get that answer, but that's what I'm thinking.
So, question, legal counsel, we cannot extend the moratorium, is that, that's what the law says?
Yes.
I mean, that's, it's a little bit of a leap for me. I mean, I've been pretty adamant on this.
Would you be willing to let some people make comments tonight? Because we have people from all over here.
Do you want to open it up to a public hearing?
I, I just want to hear testimony. I don't really want the hearing to be open based on what you're saying.
Well, we don't have to, well, we, a public hearing, we don't have to make a decision, I do. So, I mean, that's, that's an option, I guess, but I, I appreciate all those who came, either in support or against us, because we have made decisions that have made people happy and unhappy with a lot less people in attendance. So, thank you. Thank you, so. Back to Councilman Johnson's inquiry.
Well, what if we didn't close the public hearing and just, just take our chances on December 1, and just extend the public hearing into our next meeting? Can we do that?
Well, we, we could have the public hearing, and we can ask the question if they'll hold off a little bit, and, and then if they will, then maybe we make that decision. If they, if they won't commit to holding off and working this through for, you know, a bit, then, then I guess we can make a decision up or down, I guess, at that point.
So, our question is, is because, because of the. So, our question is, is because, because of the events or the agenda of the evening that brought about the moratorium and how government works, I guess I can't, I can't make a, make a motion. I just think with, with this and the moratorium expiring, whether or not we want to go back and reconsider the request that was that evening for a sign that we denied with one, two people.
I think that, I think the real question is, is, and maybe the answer is fairly simple. Will the sign people work with us?
Let's go forward to the public hearing and just take comment.
We'll go from there, and so.
Just don't close the public hearing.
We'll figure that out in a minute. So, with that, I declare the public hearing.
Now, a lot of us have been here with an understanding that we're gonna make a decision today, we'll talk about it. Just one council member cannot come with something like this and just take everybody's time over here and make some-
So, hold on, hold on. Go ahead and sit, go ahead and sit back down. We're gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. I declare the public hearing open. Now, I will say this, I will say this. If you're gonna be repetitive, we don't, we don't want repetitive. Look, we want a sign ordinance, we want this, we want some substantial stuff so that we can at least have something to consider. So, please do not, if you're gonna say the same thing that the person just before you said, maybe be careful with that.
The question was, will they all say the same thing about holding off?
We've got 15 minutes.
Well, we'll, we'll figure that out. So, the public hearing is open.
Applicant is in staff.
Staff. Applicant.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, I have, I go through the background, through, through the proposed changes, and through some potential amendments. It's a little lengthy. I can do that if you like. I have kind of a synopsis of-
Would you read it?
Of PowerPoint. With PowerPoint, what would be your pleasure?
I'm prepared to listen to what you have to say.
All right, great. Now, I'm not an expert on this stuff.
We got somebody coming up that knows how to work the-
Turn it in so far, so we can see it.
Oh, down. Okay. You have to have the young guys teach the old guys how to use computers.
That's right.
So, background, in order to address concerns regarding the use of off-premise signs, billboards, the lack of adequate regulation to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare, especially as regards electronic off-premise signs, the Pocatello City Council adopted Resolution 2017-09 declaring a moratorium of acceptance of applications for such signs. At this council's study session of August 10, 2017, majority of the council supported a complete ban on all new billboards. At the informational meeting on September 28, 2017, city staff met with sign contractors and members of the public regarding the proposed changes. Concerns were raised pertaining to the proposed ban on billboards and proposed changes for temporary signage. At the council, city council study session held on October 12, 2017, council directed staff to draft a revised sign ordinance banning all new off-premise slash billboard signs and not to include potential revisions to temporary signs. Additionally, staff was directed to attend the city council working lunch meeting held on October 19, 2017 to discuss the draft ordinance. At the working lunch, staff presented the revised ordinance banning all new off-premise slash billboard sign, signs. Staff and council also discussed alternative options to the current proposed ban on all new off-premise slash billboard signs. After discussion, city council instructed staff to draft a revised ordinance, including options for addressing new off-premise billboards through cap and trade process. So, the major changes that are being proposed under 1520.240. Number one, no new off-premise slash billboard sign shall be permitted within the city of Pocatello except through annexation or by removal of an existing off-premise billboard sign in exchange for a new sign. 1520.240A1, should property be annexed into the city of Pocatello, which has upon the subject property an existing off-premise billboard sign, said off-premise billboard sign shall be removed within five years of the effective date of the ordinance annexing the property. B, 1520.240A7, all applications for off-premise slash billboard signs must be accompanied by demolition permit for an existing off-premise billboard sign. Two, all applications for new off-premise billboard signs shall be required to receive approval of a conditional use permit, and this is referenced in 1520.240B. Thirdly, all future off-premise billboard signs shall be permitted only on specific corridors linked to the state highway system and identified in section 1520.240A6A3D. Fourthly, off-premise billboard signs shall not be located closer than 1,000 feet to a residential or residential, residential, commercial, professional zoning district, which is referenced in 1520.240C6B. And lastly, change in sign type from static to electronic is expressively prohibited for existing and relocating static off-premise signs, which is referenced in 1520.240A6. So, after a review by legal and planning staff, and in an effort to address public comment received as of the date of this report, the council may wish to consider the following amendments to the ordinance as currently proposed. One, remove section 1520.240A1, requiring removal of off-premise sign, signs five years after annexation. This will prevent the possibility of a takings issue being raised as outlined in Idaho Code Secondly, remove section 1520.240A4 on lease expiration to close a potential loophole that might allow an increase in the number of off-premise signs. This maintains the intent of the proposed ordinance as a cap and trade policy. Thirdly, amend section 1520.240B to remove the requirement that all new off-premise billboard signs be permitted through the conditional use permit. This section was included to provide for a public process for all off-premise signed billboard signs. However, after further review, it is staff's recommendation that this section be amended to instead require a public hearing before the hearing examiner on all applications for replacement of an off-premise billboard sign. And the main reason for that is that that would also, if it was changed to, say, planning and zoning, it would require an amendment to the zoning ordinance. Currently, the hearing examiner hears the sign codes. Fourthly, amend section 1520.240A3, removing the timeline of six months to complete repairs to a damaged sign. This would address concerns of quantifying and enforcing what constitutes, quote, damage. Lastly, amend section 1520.20.240C6B, which increases the spacing requirement from residential and residential, commercial, professional zoning districts from 250 feet to 1,000 feet. Staff believes that the proposed separation standard may be lowered from 1,000 to 500 feet, while maintaining the intent of the proposed ordinance and not increase the net number of off-premise slash billboard signs. So, that's a synopsis of a voice before you, Mayor Council. We do have staff here. If you have other questions of Maloney, or Carl, or myself, we can answer those for you. Otherwise, we'll hear from the public.
Questions? Council President Brown.
Matt, thanks for your hard work. Do you, do you have a sense of how many available sites are left in the city limits of Pocatello?
Under the current code?
Yes.
I would, I would say, and I did study, and of course, there's always times where you're gonna miss some, but under, under the current code, I believe that there's at least seven.
And if we were to adopt this new ordinance, do you have any idea of how many?
I think it depends on, it depends on whether you go with 1,000 foot or 500 feet, and we do have a map that we can show you if you're interested in that. But it would go anywhere between three to five.
Okay. And with our current ordinance, how, how do we enforce that ordinance now?
Simply, you can apply for an off-premise sign. They need, you need to meet spacing requirements. There is in commercial general districts, a 21-day notice period. If we receive any type of response from that, then we, it goes through, through the process, and then, but otherwise, it would be, if they meet all the standards under the current code, whether it's, whether it's electronic or you're, you're static, then it would be approved administratively by staff.
Okay. If, if I'm a resident that's further than 250 feet away from a sign location that's being proposed, do I have any rights if the light off of that new electronic billboard comes into my house?
We do have lighting standards in the, in the code for that specific reason. And so, when we, when we receive complaints, and there are, there's a couple of there, especially one, especially with the electronic signs, not so much with the static, but with the electronic signs, until they, they need to get kind of, you know, tweaked and so forth, we will reach out to the sign company and say, hey, you know, these are requirements, and you need to, you need to tone them down a little bit to meet our, the code's standards.
Just a side note, the sign bench and fairway has not changed. So, under, under our new proposed ordinance, would you consider, one of the concerns that's been brought up is that the language under our proposed ordinance would create a definition for a vehicle wrap as an off-premise sign?
We, the current code, and even in the proposed code, we do not have anything that regulates anything that's on, on a vehicle. And so, we had that, kind of that question yesterday with the, with another one, there's certain aspects of the code that says, yeah, it's kind of an off-premise sign if you're advertising something that's off-premise. But when you go into and you really start going in and doing kind of analysis and walking through it, it doesn't, there's not permit process, anything of that nature. So, they're, they're permitted. They, they don't need a permit through, through our department.
Okay. Thank you.
Matt, Councilman Johnson.
I'm interpreting what you're saying is, at this point, complaint-driven is the way in which we enforce anything. Someone has to complain. There's no one on city staff that would enforce anything we have right now unless there's a complaint?
That, that has changed in, in the code enforcement world. So, I know there's, there's one or two signs out there, even if they're on-premise, that are bright, and you know, just like, nah, okay, that's, that's beyond, you know, what, what the code requires. And again, we will, at staff, typically, my, my approach for code enforcement is, if I know who the owner is of the sign or the property, I will reach out to them rather than to send, say, a code enforcement letter and say, hey, you know, can you go out and look at this? My observation is, it appears to be brighter than, than what, what the code requires.
Is there any punishment?
There could be, but typically, typically, we don't go to that extent. Most, most will comply, most will work with staff. And they understand that, you know, there's that, there's that time where you just need to kind of, okay, we'll get it to where the code needs, where the code requires it.
Any other questions for Matt? Thank you, Matt. Matt, has there been, before you leave, any more correspondence than what we've received already in our packet here, and then before?
There is not. You should, what I received is at 5:00, you should add it.
Okay.
Yeah, he's giving you everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we will look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application. You're coming up, you gotta move faster than that. If you're gonna say something, we gotta be moving here. So, you're supporting?
I'm supporting your amendment.
If you could write your, state your name, and then write it down there on the sheet, that'd be great.
Corey Krantz, Idaho Transportation Department, District 5, Traffic Engineer, 5151, South Fifth Avenue. ATD is in support of getting control on these digital billboards. I would recommend that you look at some lighting standards. Lighting standards are something that can be measured with a light meter, and they can be dialed up and down. They need to be bright in the daytime, but they don't need to be so bright at night. And we've been having some issues with our traffic signals in which lighting is affecting the signals, giving calls to our video detection. We have worked with some of them, they've dialed them down. I'm still not sure that we're quite complete. But, you know, there was a request for a billboard in the Ridley's parking lot. We did not support that because it would have been right in behind one of our signals. I cannot prove that billboards are a distraction to a driver and cause crashes to go up, but inverse here is, they are to be a distraction because they're to advertise something. And that in itself can cause distracted driving, especially if there's motion or other things on these billboards. You know, pretty hard not to look at the TV sometimes when you're at home. These things are very much just like a giant TV, and I've seen some of the billboards that have motion on them, and I do not support them being anywhere around our signals on the state highway system through Pocatello. I recommend that maybe you take a little further look at that and make some adjustments to how close it can be to a signal. Obviously, they cannot backdrop a signal, because then it hides the colors of the signal within it. But, I mean, we have billboards that have, you know, grays and reds and other stuff. That might be a distraction enough to a driver that they could pull away from a signal and cause crash. So, we are in support of, you know, if you're gonna put a new one up, you gotta take another one down. And, you know, this is a, I know this is important for people who think they need to advertise, but we have a lot of other media avenues to advertise these days. And, you know, this is a big field. You could be moving into digital billboards that are on top of buses and on the cars and all this kind of stuff, or even person- this kind of stuff, or even personalized advertising. It has potential to go a lot of ways, and it's something you guys need to think a little bit further about and work with your staff to come up with some further constraints on what may be allowed within the city. But we are in support of the billboards being constrained, because we have a lot of other ways to advertise, so.
Was it Corey?
Yes.
Have you read the existing ordinance?
No, sir, I haven't.
And you work for ITD. Are you speaking on behalf of the Idaho Transportation Department?
I'm speaking on behalf of the Traffic Section, who has to deal with crashes.
Okay, and what's your title with the Idaho Transportation Department?
I'm the District 5 Traffic Engineer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I might just remind everybody, you have a three-minute time period as well, and so. Any others supporting the application? Any uncommitted to the application?
Anyone in support of the application?
Oh.
David Hutchinson, 1147 Holman Avenue. And I'm just going to probably bring up some points that were brought up last time, and it's not to do with the traffic part, so it's more to do with the aesthetics of our valley and the way the valley is set up, with a lot of residential dwellings on the benches, and the nice view that we have here in the community, and my hopes of protecting what we have here and not letting that go in the way of these boards that beg for attention constantly, 24 hours a day. I won't go any further on that. There's another point I want to bring up. Oh, yeah. If there was some way that they could design those lights, where the light was directed for the audience that is probably intended for, the audience that could actually probably read it at that distance and not across the valley, not two miles, or three miles, or eight miles, but the audience that the actual text is addressing, then I think that'd be a huge plus. I know on parking lot lights, the lights themselves are more directed downwards for the people that need the security and whatnot for the parking lot. And I just, it's hard to believe that there's not some way of shielding on those signs, on the sides, that wouldn't hopefully add a lot of cost, but yet would hope to shield the direction and the distance of, in my opinion, the annoying lights.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others in support of the application? Any uncommitted to the application? I saw our hand go up here. See, that's how you're supposed to do it, folks, right there. Be ready to move here.
So, Diana Scow, 1709 Von Allen Street. Yes, so the reason I am uncommitted is because I don't think the proposed changes are strong enough. I'll just read three quick points. I am in favor of the proposed change to the signage and billboards in Pocatello for reasons of public health and safety, engagement in civil society, and aesthetics. I would restrict billboards more than the current proposed changes suggest, and as they stand, billboards keep getting taller, and they block my view of what I consider to be better things. Regarding safety, a 2012 study conducted by Marchiano and Yasharan found that when advertising billboards were present, they attracted the participants' attention, resulting in an increased tendency to drive faster. This interfered with people's ability to look out for what we call critical events, and in some instances, this led to an accident. A 2013 study conducted by Dukeych et al. found that electronic billboards have an effect on gazing behavior by attracting more and more and longer glances than regular signs, making this idea of being responsive to critical events even more important. Second, regarding civil society, if there must be billboard signs in Pocatello, I propose that the city amend the ordinance to require some portion of their use for the public good. For example, why not require electronic billboard sign owners to post all city public hearings on their signs? And number three, regarding aesthetics, I, as a citizen, think too many signs of regular and electronic billboard fashion, whatever they are, are not attractive. They distract me, they annoy me, they blind me when I'm driving, and I don't want Pocatello to look like downtown Tokyo. If I am looking at something while driving, in the day, I would rather it be our mountains, and at night, I would rather have it be our night skies. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others uncommitted? There we go.
Could we get a microphone for those, for the hard-pressed people here?
There is a microphone right there.
Hold the computer down, maybe.
Oh, that might help.
I'll speak up.
Can you just reach up and fold that computer down? Just close that down, just close that computer. Perfect. Right like that. Maybe that will help.
We don't want it to be repetitive, and it would be nice for us to be able to hear it.
Sure, sure. So, we will go ahead. You're good? Uncommitted?
My name is Jeff Anderson. Actually, I've been waiting 57 years for such a sign ordinance to take place. Don't weaken on the stuff. I mean, now you've got a chance to make a better place for Pocatello. Pocatello's a wonderful place to live, and those of us that like to live here want to be proud of Pocatello, so I would ask the city council, as representative of the common person in town, let's move forward with this and make this a better-looking town. I've not liked the signs that are springing up around Pocatello. Lady Bird Johnson was right when she helped impose the sign ban on the interstates, and I think we should go back to that, but I am prejudiced, I'll admit that. But please do consider making this a good, strong law.
Thank you. Any others uncommitted? Okay, then, we're going to go to any of those opposed to the application. So, I have a feeling we're going to have a few of you, and so if you would just go ahead and jump in line right here.
Evening, gentlemen. My name's Rick Millward. I live at 825 West Southern. What I'm hearing, in some weeks, it seems like I talked to a couple thousand people about signs, because I work for Blaze Sign, as I'm sure you guys are aware, and almost all the complaints that we get about signs, almost always are, can be dealt with through code enforcement or a simple phone call. The sign code that we have in place now will do everything that we want to do. The proposed changes to the code basically shut down the off-premise signs completely, as well as digital signage. Most of the digital signage out there will not operate with the proposed changes. You're going to have a gray wall right there in the daylight, and not much better at night. But what we would like to see as part of this sign community, and I know a lot of the business people that we spoke with, rather than jumping ahead with this, is some more education. At one time, I know staff had proposed a working group. If we're going to revise these sign codes, let's do it right, so it will last, you know, the next 100 years. Make changes that are beneficial to the community and all aspects of the community. The way we're going about it here, we're throwing out the baby with the bathwater. There is a lot of information and a lot of education available. The Northwest Sign Council, the International Sign Association, has dealt with setting up sign codes that not only don't violate the law, as in, you know, we have Gilbert versus Reed, and all the argument that goes with content versus non-content related and that, and, you know, that's a fight that no one wants to get into, and it can be avoided. There are many communities nationwide that have took advantage of the services of the Northwest Sign Council and the ISA in revising these sign codes if we need to go forward with that. Once again, I see we're here now, staff is making revisions to the revisions to the revisions, to try to keep up with, you know, whoever's yelling in their ear loudest about what at the time. And once again...
Oh, sorry, Rick, time's up. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Real quick question. So, would you be willing to work with us in the immediate future?
Of course, we would. And I think I'd like to speak for Blaze Sign, for sure. We would be, and it's our customers, and also your existing sign code. We'll guarantee you're not swamped with permit requests.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you. Matt, if you would fill your name out there and then just hand that back, and everybody behind you, if you want to go ahead and fill your name out, it'll speed the process up just a little bit. The last person in line, hold on to this clipboard and bring it up with you.
Matt Hunter with the Pocatello-Chewick Chamber of Commerce, 324 South Main Street. 13 years I've been at the chamber, I believe this is the third time I have talked with this council about sign ordinance issues in the past. I won't spend a lot of time on it, but we have had a committee that's worked on it. I believe it is a good idea, as the gentleman before me mentioned, to have a committee work on this. But let me just comment specifically on what you're looking at today. The chamber believes that the current off-premise billboard regulations are more than restrictive enough, and they do not need to be enhanced. It seems that today, the council is trying to create new regulations, and they should be working to enforce the rules that already exist within the sign ordinance. We believe, we've spent a lot of time on the amount of light that can come off of them, we believe that's dealt with, and if we would enforce that, we would be fine. Maybe there's better ways to look at how that light comes off, I don't know. I'm definitely not a sign expert, but we need people at the table that are. I believe if the council makes the changes they're proposing today, that we're saying to new and existing businesses that we don't want you to be successful in Pocatello. Businesses should be allowed to market their business in a way that they feel makes their business most successful within the rules that already exist today. And the changes that you're opposing, in my opinion, are an impediment to business and are unnecessary. Thank you for listening to my comments today.
Matt, I've got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You represent Pocatello-Chewick, right?
Pocatello-Chewick.
How's business out in Chewick?
Business in Chewick is okay.
Okay, thanks.
They don't have billboards, right?
Frank Newton, 6346 Old Ranch Road, with Performance Outdoor. Just being real brief here, in May of 2017, council started up with a moratorium on billboards, and then on September 28th, we had an informational meeting with the Plating and Zoning folks, with outdoor sign contractors and concerned citizens. The study session with the city council was held on September 28th, where no public comment was allowed, and then here we are at a public hearing, and who's discussed I've voted for all you guys. I have elected you to listen to reasonable and prudent conversation regards making decisions that affect the citizens and businesses in Pocatello. And I don't know if you feel like you have done a good job at that with this, it just kind of seems like it's being ran through. And I am advising that we have, you know, a cooling-off period in that we actually take some time, and we review this in a prudent fashion, so everybody gets to put their two cents in, and we're not just making decisions without planning.
You get the impression we're listening to you now?
You know what? I get the impression you're listening to me for three minutes, Gary, and that's about it. So, that's, but in addition to that, I am competing in the outdoor business with Pocatello Regional Transit, who sells billboard signs on your buses. So, and they actually charge money for these. So, you want to ban me, but what are we going to do with these guys? Anybody? I mean, seriously, these guys charge a significant amount of money, they compete with the outdoor business, and what are we doing with these guys?
Maybe the next thing we need to do is look at banning anything on any vehicle that's considered...
You know what? That sounds very reasonable and prudent, and I think that we've all got a...
I'd be up for that, Frank, and I think that's a good thing for us to look at.
Well, I think that, you know, if you're going to look at that, then you need to look at this in its entirety. So, do you think you can make that decision reasonably this evening?
That's a good idea.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. No, thank you.
My name's Rob Kirkham. I live at 519 South 19th. It's my belief that the proposed ordinance changes impose unfair limitations on small businesses. In Pocatello, they limit free speech, and it takes a technological step backwards that I believe will hurt economic development, as has been mentioned. If the currently proposed ordinance passes, new competitors in the outdoor advertising industry will be prohibited ostensibly. This is not only bad business policy for municipality to place upon its citizens, it's a grievous limitation on free speech. By capping outdoor advertising locations, we are also placing a cap on the number of voices welcome to participate in Pocatello's outdoor advertising discussion. All of this at a time when it has never been easier for small voices to enter the discussion. The advent of digital signage represents an encouraging future for advertising companies and for the public. Digital signage allows advertisers and advertising companies to enact flexible campaigns for any budget or amount of time. Some companies that have previously been unable to pay upfront costs for printing of vinyls installation, this kind of thing, now have an opportunity at a much lower rate. An excellent example of this is Old Town Pocatello. If you look at Old Town Pocatello, they utilize digital signs to promote their Kindness Week, which was a huge success. They also promote a wide array of businesses ranging from restaurants to printing shops in Old Town. The flexibility of digital signage is an improvement over conventional signage because it allows for rapid updating of advertisers' message. So if you think about an advertiser such as ISU, one week they may be advertising a drama production, next week they may be advertising an athletic event, it allows for extreme flexibility for them at low cost. Digital signage maximizes a sign's efficiency by allowing multiple advertisers in one location. This should be a win-win, win for everybody. Advertisers get better access to signage, advertising companies get greater efficiency, the public gets more relevant information, the city sees less proliferation in general, with perhaps a greater concentration in a few key areas, and there is no waste product created, which is not the case with all types of outdoor advertising. Let's not keep Pocatello in the pre-digital age, we want Pocatello to be an economic leader, a city in which businesses, both small and large, can thrive. With this in mind, I strongly urge council members to oppose this ordinance as it is written. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Bladen, members of the city council, my name is Jeff Young. I represent Young Electric Sign Company, also known as Yesco. Our local office is 275 South Fifth Avenue. We're nearing our 100th year. I'm third generation with the business. My grandfather was an immigrant. We're primarily a sign manufacturing service business. About 9% of our annual revenue comes from billboards. We have 30 offices in the west, 60 offices in the east, and about 1,800 employees involved in the building, manufacturing, servicing of signs. We've spent the last 12 years actually manufacturing electronics, so you kind of know where this is coming. We oppose the ban, we oppose the ban on electronics, but I'd like to offer today, we attend a lot of city council meetings as well because of our footprint. At the end of these meetings, you count how many against, many of which are great friends. I've got wonderful friends who just hate billboards, just the way it is. You have those four, and you say, okay, how does that represent the population? And I'm happy to say that Ken Foster at the University of Utah School of Communications conducted a survey from the populations to find out how people really feel about billboards. And what he published in his paper is that 11% of the population don't like them. That means 89% do. In fact, let me go on to say, he assembled other data from other national... In fact, let me go on to say, he assembled other data from other national studies. 77% of billboard advertising is local, helps the local community. 78% of those surveyed said that if you take it away, their estimated loss would be about 18%, and it's an important tax revenue source. I quote from the study, this is what he said. "The researcher, Ken Foster, was surprised to find that the issues raised by various interest groups was of little concern to the large majority of population." So large majority, let me quantify that a little better. He asked, "Does the local community benefit from outdoor advertising?" 78% said yes. What's more of an issue? Vacant lots, unimproved areas, unsightly buildings, commercial residential adjacencies. 76, 73, 79, 82% are the issue, not the billboards. Which is more critical, visual pollution or substantive pollution? 87% substantive pollution, not visual pollution. Only 9% said visual. I'm running out of time here. The research shows that billboards are highly effective, highly efficient. The Idaho State Journal has a circulation of 17,000. There's 50,000 motorists on I-15. The economics of it are compelling, it's a very inexpensive and efficient way to get the word out. And the big one here, in my last 20 seconds, the research asked, "Would you advise your government officials to ban or limit billboards?" 89% said no. We are very much in favor of lighting standards. That solves, from our perspective, virtually all of the issues of the adjacencies and the annoyance and everything else. And the, we've had over 200 communities adopt these limitations. Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it.
Thank you, okay. Jeff, Jeff, we have a question for you.
Could you provide us the reference for that study?
I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Yeah, Ken Foster, University of Utah. Happy to-
So we can look at the context in which it was conducted?
Love to.
Okay.
Love to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Helm, YESCO Outdoor Media, at 1605 South Gramercy Road in Salt Lake City. Thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. YESCO Outdoor was, I was brought into this a little late. I think the first time I was here was late September. For the record, my first thing that jumped into my head was, and I'm not saying it didn't happen, just maybe you guys could clarify for me if this actually went through due process. State statute requires that an ordinance shall be read on three different days, two of which may be by title only, one read in which shall be in full, yada, yada, yada. I don't know if that happened, maybe it did, I wasn't included. If it did, I wish I could have been here. Just to touch on a few things I've heard tonight. One thing that really jumped out to me was the gentleman from ITD stated that he's worried about motion and video. Billboards do not incorporate video, there's no motion. We're very much, as Jeff just said, in support of lighting requirements. It's very ineffective for our sign to be too bright. People don't want to look at it. Try to run them with a light meter so that it's always going up and down, as the sun comes up, the sun goes down. One thing that, as staff read the report that I didn't hear, that kind of jumped out to me was, in 1520, 240, in the language that's being proposed, it relates to damage to the sign and it requires staff approval and you have six months to do it. Well, in an environment where I feel like people are trying to shut down the business, that the Youngs have hired me to help run, when you guys are taking our rights away to operate our business, I get worried that if I turn in an application, it's going to sit on a desk for six months. And if I've got a sign that's had some wind damage and something's hanging off of it, that's a problem. We need to be able to go out there immediately and fix that. I think a lot of the language that's been proposed is, as I've stated in previous meetings, is much of a knee-jerk reaction to this. I think that if you're going to pass sign code changes, we need to be able to sit down and talk about them. It doesn't mean we're going to get everything we want, but we're willing to work with the city as a group, as an industry. YESCO Outdoor is willing to agree that if the moratorium did expire, we're not going to come in with a stack of permits December 1st or whatever the day is. We're part of the community, we want to come in, we want to be able to sit at the table and work with staff. Thank you.
Oh, we got another question.
So you're telling us that all of your signs are just, digital signs are adjusted according to the brightness of the sun, intensity of the sun?
Yes, sir. We run a light meter and we also have a backup in the computer, so if the light meter were to fail, it goes off sunrise and sunset schedules, so you would see the sign dim down when the sun went down.
On a bright day, it, I don't know what they do, probably maybe have to be brighter.
Right.
But on a, when it gets cloudy, they adjust all the time?
Yes, sir, they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thank you for paying attention to us. I'm Jim Morphy. I do not have stock in any billboard companies, nor do I own any billboards. I just, I take a little different approach on this. I have spent the last 44 years working to fill vacant office, commercial buildings and land in this community. I'm sure none of us like vacancies. My premise is that commercial areas should be, present brightness and vitality, where residential areas should present quietness, safety and serenity. I think our community is good enough to do both. My problem with the proposed ordinance is that it assumes in looking forward that our commercial areas will be static, while in reality, the only constant in the business world is change. The unwillingness to lean into the technological future that this ordinance represents is to invite stagnation. Our commercial districts will expand and reform in the next decades. That's as long as we don't insist on status quo. The advent of LED boards has opened up the possibility for countless local businesses to enhance their visibility and viability, keeping perhaps millions of dollars of retail and professional service trade local. The city needs to support the effort to keep those dollars at home. It is not always easy for a local business to thrive in Pocatello, but billboards are the one medium that Amazon is yet to commandeer. Let's look beyond the billboards to the clients that they serve. And now, and hopefully, for now and hopefully in the future, there are all types of entities in addition to retail and car dealerships that find this medium essential to their being present in Pocatello. Professional service, and you see it if you just look, go around and look at billboards. There are professional services, medical services, Idaho State University programs, hospital facilities utilize billboards continually. Safe public safety, we are always reminded about safe belts and not to drink and drive. And, you know, Amber Alerts can be posted immediately. Local points of interest like Old Town museums, upcoming events in our communities are on billboards. Civic-minded persons seeking public service find billboards an essential option every election. These billboards remind us to get out and do the polls and vote for you.
Sanju Charou, 1491 Cottage Avenue. I'm not an 1,800 employee company over here as he has got, but possibly 40 years on the road, my grandkids would, might say that, you know, my great-grandfather fought for his first billboard that he was denied, and he fought back because he liked to fight for his rights, and he got it. I'd applied for a billboard in the month of March and was denied in the month of May. There was no any such base to, for the denial. I'm still confused, concerned. I ask people, people that talk to me in the community, why have your billboard been denied? As exactly mentioned and questioned by Mr. Moore to Mr. Matt this evening, that Matt, what was the real cause, or is there any cause of lights that would distract or ask somebody to discontinue or drop the billboards? And Mr. Matt did not have any answer to that. He says, no, we could only drop the lights down a little bit, the mits down. And that night, if I remember, and the councilman, Mr. Mayor, if you remember, that I did also willingly say that I would turn my billboards off at night at 11 o'clock, just to respect my neighbors who are, who were getting disturbed in sleep. Today I'm asking that I am for this and I know we are together growing Pocatello, we are getting a brand new subdivision coming up known as North Gate Mile, and there we will be needing billboards. Billboards is the only source how we can grow the city, the companies can advertise their own products. If they are looking for hiring people, they can advertise through billboards. That is the only means of communication as of today. Very less people are going through anything else other than digital advertising. I would ask the city council members, the mayor, to once again, please reconsider the Pocatello Creek signage that was denied and see what exactly was the purpose for you guys to deny. There was no reason for there to deny. I have followed every step of the city had asked me to follow, every little minute step of that. Still I got denied, and I still do not understand why. I need to know that answer, I would appreciate that. And it has been approved by the hearing, just to let you know, it was approved. One of the city council member told me a month later that she did not know, or he did not know that it was approved. That bothered me a little bit, but just to let you know, it was approved by the hearing and then denied, and I still do not understand the purpose and the reason behind that. I do have 20 more seconds. My last request to you is, you guys are respected elected officials, and I understand that you will be working with the community and we would like to work with you. And please, talk about it, think about it, and we're looking forward to work together in the community, and I'm hoping to see my fine sign get approved. Thank you.
Sanju, just to be clear.
Sure.
The whole process comes down to where it can be appealed. Nothing is done until you've gone through the whole process.
Sure.
You had gone several steps in the process, but the neighborhood appealed.
Sure.
That was the last step, okay? And the council voted that night based on the appeal that the neighborhood made and the number of people that gave testimony regarding how they felt it was going to be a huge encumbrance on their community. And that's, that's, it was the whole process. The process didn't get accomplished until that appeal had been processed.
I understood that.
Okay, so we didn't, we took it the whole course. Didn't violate it.
Do I have time to respond to this?
No, I just wanted to tell you.
Oh, then how can I not rebuttal when you're telling me something that you have one side?
Thank you, this isn't the right forum for-
This is one-sided, Mr. Mayor.
Sanju, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, he just asked me a question, can I not answer this? You are covering yourself without giving us a chance to speak. That's what happened last time. Both of you, Mr. Brown and you.
Do we have, am I going to have to have you removed because you're not willing to?
No, this is respectable that we will get out. But unfortunately, this is not how we expect the council members to speak. This is discrimination, straight up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now we're going to fire that off.
Thank you.
He deserves to have an opportunity to respond.
My name is Elton Zundl. I come here after reading the paper today to agree with the article there. This ordinance constitutes a taking, not only a taking, but a taking without just compensation, which leads us to a process of coming to the crossroads. First of all, I want to let you know I've come to the crossroads many times in my life. And without exception, I knew the right path, but there's times I didn't take it. Why? Because it was too damn hard. Pocatello has come to the crossroads again. We ask them to take the right path. This law will be a taking without just compensation. It's wrong. It's illegal. And more than that, by God, it is definitely wrong. I would like to close my comments with a story that I've used in a number of cases like this. Football team was in a championship game, end of the fourth quarter, the coach called the quarterback over and he says, listen, we got a chance to tie this game. Says, what I want you to do is call three quarterback sneaks, and on the fourth down, drop back and punt that ball just as far as you can and the clock runs out. So he called the plays, 20 yards down the field, nobody around, he fell on the ball. Called it the second time, two gravy guards tear up, 20 yards downfield, nobody around, he falls on the ball. Third time, gets all the way to the goal line, and there's nobody around and he falls on the ball. Fourth down, he backs up and kicks it clear out of the stadium, and the time runs out. Coach is waiting for him at the sideline, he says, son, I don't want you to think I'm angry, but what in the world was you thinking about when you kicked the ball clear out of the stadium? He says, coach, I was thinking, what a dumb play that was to call. I tell you, if we pass this ordinance, two or three years down the road, the people in Pocatello are going to be saying, what a dumb play that was to call.
Mayor, can we take a short break? Easy. Okay, thank you. Before we continue on, we're going to take a five-minute break. You're up next.
Okay.
Okay? So we'll have a break real quick. Thank you for joining us after our break. We'll go ahead and get started with the testimony opposed to the application. Rich, it's you.
Hi, Rich Bull with Express Employment Professionals at 850 North Fifth Avenue, right across the parking lot here. I'm here on a different reason, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I've had a sign company approach me about putting a sign at my business, and we, my wife and I laughed it off. No way. And, and then we, they approached us again and had a different approach and something made sense. Number one, the amount of money for their rental would kick off my money for, the money would start us to, to be able to continue finishing our renovations on our building. So we would get an upgrade on our building. And, and our, our building would look better for you and for being right here in the, in the city. We have the back half, we have to finish it. The second purpose, we own a staffing service and we get job orders every day. And as Mr. Mayor so touted during the, during the mayor's race, we don't have a high unemployment rate here, and we're constantly looking for people, and good people. And so the, the sign company that approached us talked to us about being able to change our ads and quickly to meet our needs. And that's when these signs, these electronic signs started making a lot of sense to our business and, and the way, the speed of business today. Because as we know, we're crying for people. And, and we know we have a high underemployed population here, and, and we're not just getting the temporary business, but we're getting some good full-time business too. And, and to go out, to be able to reach out and find those people face to face versus being able to drive down the street and see what we're looking for would certainly help the underemployed and, and our business to be able to help fill other positions in the business. And I appreciate your time today, thank you very much.
Thanks, Rich. Thank you, Rich. Things are so bad, he could probably even get me a job.
Nikki Tason, 4963 Yellowstone-Chubak. I still expect an answer to my question that I asked at the previous hearing. The preamble states, we the people of the United States establish justice, we ensure domestic tranquility, we provide for the common defense, we promote the general welfare, and do secure the liberty of ourselves and our posterity, and ordain the Constitution as the supreme law of this land. In Article 1, Section 10-
Nikki, you need to state of the sign code.
I am. I'm reading why I'm opposed to this.
Haven't heard anything about the sign code yet, so please state of the sign code.
I'm saying why. I am. It says in Section 10 of Article 1 that Congress or the United States can make a law impairing the obligation of contracts. So therefore, taking away somebody's ability to advertise would be doing that. I'm opposed to the changes, I want to know why you allow, if they annex, they can have it, and I want to know what streets are the corridors, you know, coming into the corridor of Yellowstone, because that's also a part of this, and if it's going to be a benefit to you- Because that's also a part of this and if it's going to be a benefit to you financially, what are we gonna lose? Because that seems to be the continual game here. I was at the previous public hearing for this sign ordinance and you talk about communicate with the Blaze Sign Company. Didn't even get invited to that meeting that you did the last time around. He said that. So let's be honest here. I'm opposed to these because one, the pollution, light pollution, as well as the radiation of their exposure. It looks like a cluttered mess around here. I walk everywhere. Now people are getting bigger signs to cover up the sign in front of them. And then also, I oppose it.
So you're actually speaking in favor of the ordinance right now?
No, I'm telling you why. Um, it says that things can be linked, that are linked to it. I oppose that part. And it also will only be allowed if it's annexed in, so I'm questioning what's going to be annexed and to who and who's making money off of it. And in regards to, um, that said that you're gonna take off the part about being able to address the repairs that need to be made within six months. No, because then we get a bunch of junky places like we have now. Let's hold a standard. People need to advertise, but what's happening is wrong. And it always comes up with who's got the money and what they want to do. I don't like seeing carnation of soft pornography or Adam and Eve or Budweiser. That's where the promote the general welfare and ensure domestic tranquility comes in. So does health and safety and the beautification. I would much rather see the nighttime sky. I can't see it till I get out and chub it because of all the lights and things here. So let's decide. And also, when it talks about on-premise.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I apologize. I believe she was speaking in favor of the ordinance, not opposed to the old ordinance, but we'll be back here in a little while.
So good evening. I'm Nikki Johnson. I'm with Blaze Sign. Um, I actually am currently living in Inkham, but I was born and raised here in Pocatello. I just wanted to touch base on a couple of things that have been brought up here this evening. One of them was, please don't bombard us with these permits come December 1st and you very well could be bombarded, not because of the sign companies, because of the community. These are things they're asking for. These are things they depend on. I'm, I'm new to the sign business. We just recently purchased Blaze Sign, myself and some of the employees. And just working there these few months, I have been amazed at the different members of the community that come in with different needs. They all have something that they want to share. They've got, they've got information that they need to put out there. We just want you guys to know that not only are we willing to work with you, we're begging to work with you. This, this is our community as well. I mean, we want a beautiful place to live. We want to live with happy neighbors. Please consider the study group. The things that I am learning, you know, I think that you could benefit with from as well. One other thing that I wanted to touch base on was the comment made about how is business in Chubak? I just want to remind you that Pocatello is off-premise to some of the businesses in Chubak. What happens when they can no longer advertise here because they've run out of room? Then how will business be in Chubak? You know, you're looking for the, the Northgate edition, the new, the new addition that's been talked about, bringing in technology parks, retail shops. Do these potential investors, are they aware that off-premise advertising for them may be in Millead? I mean, and, and is that gonna change their thoughts about coming here? It is really something that we have got to work together to, to remedy. So I do thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Rich Kirkham, 2055 Garrett Way, Pocatello. I'd like to address the freedom of speech issue, um, from a slightly different perspective than I did in my written comments. I think above all other rights, we as Americans hold freedom of speech to be the highest of all of our rights. It is the first of the enumerated rights in the bill of rights. Without the right to speak, we cannot protest, we cannot make change, we cannot affect a difference. It is the fundamental right that makes us what we are as Americans. And, uh, and so you might be saying, well, how does this proposed sign ordinance even affect freedom of speech? And let me try to explain. Pocatello has created an ordinance with two classes of signs, on-premise and off-premise. The proposed ordinance applies vastly different treatment to these two different classes of speech. In fact, one class is proposed to be banned entirely. Two years ago, a Supreme Court case known as Reed versus Gilbert, Arizona, forever changed the way that municipalities all over America will now have to deal with these two classifications because of a freedom of speech test that is called a content test. Let me illustrate this with a question. If I, under the current ordinance, erect a legally permitted onsite electronic sign and proceed to put a message on that sign advertising some off-premise business, how will your sign, sign code enforcement officer know that I have done that? Well, the obvious answer is that he'll have to read the sign. That's the only way he can make that determination and once he has done that, he can say, this violates the city ordinance, it is not permitted for you to make that speech. This is a content test and according to the Supreme Court, banning signs based on content is a violation of freedom of speech. Judge Clarence Thomas wrote the majority opinion for the Supreme Court in the Gilbert case and I would mention that was passed with, it was unanimous. All of the justices voted for it. He, I'll quote him, "A law that is content-based on its base is subject to strict scrutiny, regardless of the government's benign motive, content-neutral justification, or lack of animus towards the ideas contained in the regulated speech. Innocent motives do not eliminate the danger of censorship because governments may one day use content-based laws to regulate disfavored speech." I believe our city planners have already identified off-premise advertising as disfavored speech and I think they should study carefully Reed versus Gilbert. And that is my testimony and ask you to vote against the ordinance.
Thank you.
I'm Greg Sutter, Performance Outdoor Advertising. Tonight, what I would like to speak about is the light, the intensity of the lights. We've all talked about that all night and I think that when we, through some of our earlier meetings, we've had some people say that where did we come up with these numbers? That's why we looked and researched to see what some other cities have done and we've gone with some of the stricter numbers and that's what we're gonna use for our intensity of our lights, okay? Some of those numbers that are proposed today make these lights completely null and void. They will not work. You cannot read them. If you go out there and I think the proposal says 500 nets at night, you will not be able to read these signs. You're out of business if you go with these signs. And then the next one, we have a 5,000 nets number for daytime. 5,000 nets is what the sun puts out. If you go with anything less than five, 5,000 nets is what the sun puts out. If you don't have more nets than that, you cannot see the signs. It's not, it will not happen. My proposal to you gentlemen is, and I, and to the council, or to the staff is, and I don't think anybody's done this, is do an onsite visit with sign companies. Go out to their signs, look how they can move those signs up and down on intensity right on the spot. Stand there during the daytime hours and in the evening hours and lower the intensity and raise the intensity till you can see it and then figure out what your number is. Don't just do it arbitrarily because somebody puts a number on the internet someplace saying that you can do it. The last thing I'd like to do after that is just kind of rebut a couple of things that some people have said out here. Corey from IDT and Matt have both talked about complaints, complaints from people about lighting issues. With those two, with those, both of those people do their job very well. And I know that if I'm getting complaints, I'm getting phone calls from those guys. I've had one phone call in four years talking about a complaint about my lights. I don't think that's that big of an issue, you know, when you have one complaint in four years. The next thing I'd like to address, some lady says that some of the stuff needs to go, maybe some community service. We have community service on our boards at all times. That Old Town Pocatello has done a lot of advertising on our boards that they don't pay for, that we donate. The bicycle community, the outdoor hunting organizations, anybody that comes to us has a, the event going on out there, we're happy to help them out with. So we run our stuff like that. So, and then for you, Mr. Brown, we'll be happy to work with you about no new, no new applications.
We're not, we're not, we've, our questions have really turned into a, so we're gonna go ahead and just continue on. I have a question. The last time it was a statement, not a question. So if it's a question, go ahead and ask it.
It's a clarification.
Good. Let's do that.
I'd be happy to answer.
Well, we appreciate that. We'll call you back up when we're done with this thing.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, my name's Mark Wright. I work at Big O Tires, 731 North Fifth. And I just wanted in here because I wanted to have a chance to talk.
This is the right place. This is the place.
So this seems to be the place tonight, so. Anyway, I want to speak against these proposed changes, not because they're all bad in concept, but because I don't think they've been worked out sufficiently. I think they need more, more attention. I love Pocatello as much as the next president and I'd like to see us do the right thing. Thanks to the man from Esco for giving us some data so we have a feel for, even though our neighbors to the south are probably not like us, I think we can say that those numbers do suggest some things that are relevant for us and should be considered. Always a little data in the middle, in the midst of chaos. Anyway, I think one of my problems is once this ordinance is in place, I fear that it'll be hard to change. So I'd like us to do it right. I think it needs more collaboration. I think most of the people that have spoken are quite willing to do some collaboration. It seems like this falls into these kinds of categories. We have some light issues that sound like they could be resolved with some work. The growth in signs are all signs bad. It seems like some people seem to think so. I'm not sure that I would agree with that. When it comes to this, we're on the road to Jackson, the Tetons, Yellowstone and occasionally an eclipse. We need to realize that we want people to stop in Pocatello on their way. And a few signs is a good thing. I have one out on the highway and it helps me. People stop in from all over and, and come and see me, so I'm certainly supportive of that. I also think this annexation idea of being able to force someone to take his sign down after five years, if I understand that correctly, is really bad form. I think it's unfair. I would say it starts to wander on to legalized plunder, if I could use that term. So I don't think Pocatello wants to do that. I just think that's really bad. Might cause a lot of lawyers to get some money. I don't know if we want to do that. And anyway, I would address this and say that I think we can come together and it would be nice to form some kind of a, a structure that allow people to collaborate and get all the information on the table and make a better decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Kent Marbo, 420 Yellowstone here in Pocatello. I represent Lamar Outdoor Advertising. Thank you for letting me speak tonight, Mr. Mayor, City Council. And I must say this, it just came to me. Yogi Berra said it's day two all over again. I'll get to that later. Councilman Brown, I'd be proud to say or happy to say that Lamar has no intent to act on any permits in the next month, so if you want to table this, go right ahead. We will not be coming down to the city and asking for a permit.
I thought you would come down and chat with us and figure something out.
Uh, Matt Lewis was pretty correct on his, uh, how many possible billboard leases could there be or built structures out there in the city today as the ordinance is. About seven's correct. The thousand-foot or even 500-foot residential zones would probably make it zero because all the zoned areas we can build are up against residential areas. A couple other points I'd like to go over, um, I noticed that two of the points we had have been omitted or going to be looked at, the annexation and the, uh, if we lose a land lease with the landowner. Additionally, the concerns we have of, again, the spacing changes, requirements for residential zoning districts or residential commercial professional zoning districts from 250 to 1,000. We believe that the spacing is already restrictive enough and the opportunities for the new locations are minimal at best. Number two, needing staff approval to repair an off-premise billboard sign or any portion of that sign face frame or supporting mechanism is damaged. We feel strongly that we should be able to maintain, operate and keep safe any of our structures if they are damaged without getting approval from staff. Sense. We see a sign that's not working or has something hanging from it, we're gonna go fix it. Number three, change in sign type, change in sign type from static to electronic is expressly prohibited for existing and relocated off-premise billboard signs. Digital technology should not be treated as anything different than static bill, any differently than static billboards. And Lamar digital units are operated without any scrolling, texting, animation and are operated within the guidelines of the State of Idaho sign code. We've given you info in your packets, Lamar, saying you can read more on that. And if the sign is found to cause light to spill onto adjacent property, shielding should be required. There'd be no way to measure light spillages onto adjacent properties, so we feel this language is far too vague and would, and would be a matter of opinion, so it'd be, should be removed from the requirements of digital technology. And I'd just like to say, 31 years I've been doing this, this is my fourth sign ordinance change. I think it's only fair that we are part of it and all the outdoor companies are to help you guys work on it more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Kirkham, 141 Jefferson, Pocatello, with Dale's Outdoor Advertising. One of the arguments, first of all, if I understood the staff summary correctly, they recommended taking out the annexation, takings issue. And if, if I understood that correctly, I would strongly encourage and recommend that you do that. The other argument that has been made in favor of the ban on billboards is that billboards are distracting and therefore dangerous to public safety. That's easy to say and so as a billboard owner, I'd, and I would see if there were any scholarly and factual research or studies that had been actually written about what, how distracting and billboards really were. To my surprise, there are dozens and dozens and dozens of studies that have been done that specifically refer to the distraction of billboards as it relates to an accident, a traffic accident. The best one I found was a study commissioned by the, by the State of Alabama Department of Civil Construction and Environmental Engineering and the University of Alabama responded to that. And so two government entities commissioned this paper to be done. Dr. Nisbena Stavarinos, a psychologist, headed up the team that did this comprehensive study. Their team reviewed dozens of, of research papers that had been done and then compiled their paper and it was entitled, "The Impact of Billboards on Driver Visual Behavior: A Systematic Literature Review 2015." It's a 23-page article. The bottom line of a 23-page article was they studied what they called external distractions. External distractions could mean the dog in the car, a crying baby, the pretty girl on the sidewalk and the billboards. They determined that 6% of external distractions that they, they, they used resulted in traffic accidents, 6%. Then they went on and determined what percentage of those were billboard-related. This was their summary. Generally, billboard-related distraction appears to be minor and regulated by drivers as the demands of their driving task. Billboards pose a modest, non-negligible traffic risk through driver distraction. I would recommend that you use that study in your determining what you're going to do. on this article.
Thank you. Okay, are there any others opposed to the ordinance? Then I would call Greg back up because Councilman Bray had a question for him.
My, my question is real simple, Greg. It's, we've had testimony tonight that there are sign companies that have light meters and adjust consistently the light. Do you guys put those on your sign?
We have a light meter on our sign down on Fifth Street, and that's my light meter right now that's doing the rest of our signs, and she works diligently at those every day. We have this, we have them ordered, and ours will be installed in the next couple of weeks.
So you feel it'd be fair if we, as we're addressing this, to, if we do something, we could require light meters?
I think that would be, that'd be fine. You know, they still, even with that, they still, you know, you still have to adjust your signs to those, you know, to make sure you're getting the, the max and the minimum as you go on.
I think they have self-adjusting, is what I heard.
And you guys have, you got to do self-adjusting to yours, right?
I'm happy to speak to that.
Okay, right, right, so that's, you got, that'd be fine.
Okay, I just want to get in context, that's what we're doing here.
Okay, thank you.
So could I get him to speak to that?
If you're, if you're asked, I'd like to. Yes, sir. Thank you. The, the electronics is, is adjustable all the way to zero. We don't recommend nits at all. We recommend .3-foot candles above ambient light, which means this room has a certain brightness to it. We recommend .3-foot candles over the brightness of this room to determine how bright the sign should be. It's barely brighter than the room. In a dark area, it's gonna be, you're gonna adjust it down like 2% because it's dark around it, and, and next to a car dealership where you have a lot of lights, it's gonna be a much brighter standard. So the Dr. Ian Lewin was the one commissioned by the outdoor industry and by the on-premise industry to look at this lighting standard. It's been adopted by hundreds of communities, and we're strongly in favor of the .3-foot candles above ambient light as a reasonable way to do it. And the reason you don't want to go with nits is you have to buy a nit gun, and they cost two grand, and you can buy a light meter for a couple hundred dollars. And we could, in, in about 10 minutes, we could show you how to use a light meter outside, not only for, for, for the plant, for your city folks to go out and monitor, but for us as well. It's very easy to administrate with a light meter.
Question, this is an answer? No, it isn't.
I said I'm done.
No, I, I have a question. So when you talk about candles versus nit, is there an industry standard?
We want foot candles.
Right, is there an industry standard, not what you want, but?
There is. O triple A, the Outdoor Association of America, the International Sign Association of America, both support the .3-foot candles above ambient light.
Okay, so, okay.
We don't like nits.
All right, so with a, with nit, it's, every sign's that number, period, right?
The nit gun is really hard to, to, it's expensive, and when you point a nit gun, you're getting the light on it at an exact point, so you have to do a whole array of, of calculations, then you have to figure out how to add them all up to average them out. It's very difficult.
Is there, is there a legal issue of allowing, when you, when you talk about the .3-foot candle above ambient light?
Right. Yeah, you got it, that's it, that's it.
Is there any legal issue of having this sign required to be a different brightness than this sign over here?
No, no, not at all. In terms of Reed versus Gilbert, all that, no, not at all. And the signs, the study that came out of Canada said, when you're adopted a lighting standard and you're, and you're some distance away, you can't tell the difference between the static sign and electronic sign. That's, the intent is you're looking at a face and you go, oh, wait a minute, that just changed, but it's about the same brightness as a static sign would be. And therefore, it's minimizing the impact and the, and the, and not distraction, but just the irritation for that subset of the population that just hates them. It, it does mitigate all those issues, and it does it very well.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I get the Marbo man up here, please?
Kent, could you come on up here?
I called you the Marbo man.
Most people call me Big Daddy.
Ah, yes.
What can I answer?
You talked, you talked about light spillage.
Yeah, it was in your proposal.
Right, right. Is there, so let's just do a scenario here. You're putting up a sign 300 feet down from my house, and that light in the evening.
Digital or static?
Digital, I'm sorry, digital. And that light spills into my house in the evening. Where, where does your right and my right, I mean, it seems that they collide right now. Where, where is that line? How do we control it?
Well, I believe a digital billboard only illumines out, not this way, but straight down. And so I can't answer for you, because I've never been told or called that somebody's house is being brightened by our digitals, which here locally are both on Yellowstone, Quinn, and they're far away from a residential area. If it happened, then you have a problem probably with the face or the technology of that face. All digitals I see are always looming straight down towards the road that it's trying to attract, so I guess that might be vague, but if it was in your house, I would tell you to call your city or people and say, we got a problem, and it could be a malfunction.
And then they try to change the ordinance, and everybody gets mad at them.
Well, it's a, it's a relevant question, I should say. The other thing I want to say, since I'm up here, is any of the signs that are static that have illumination, the light is below, it shoots up. There is no way it can spill onto any other property, unless it was, say, broken and pointing down, but then again, they're 400, they're gonna light some, but they're not gonna go three miles or eight miles like we heard earlier from somebody protesting.
Okay, so with that in mind, this is deviating just a little bit. So if you have a static, a lighted static sign, the idea of having the lights point up, but doesn't spill below, is, is a, a good idea.
That's what we want.
But when it, when it shoots up, are we creating a light pollution situation?
No, we, there's studies, and I think we put it in your packets, that there's never been a light pollution study in the outdoor industry. Am I right?
I'm happy to address.
Yeah, you can address. I mean, I'm trying to, in the outdoor business, as we.
If I was in the electronic billboard side, I wouldn't want a, a, a study.
Well, and our lights are on from dark till around 12:00 midnight to 1:00 in the morning, and that's it. So it's not like they're on all night, and I appreciate your question, but I really, I can't give you enough detail on, I think, where it is, other than I know that our lights are looming right onto the face itself and nothing else.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You have to, thank you.
Okay, Council, is there any other questions that you have for anybody that's? Okay, Matt, where are you at? Or Melanie, or? Who wants to speak?
How many steps since the last time? That was about 15.
Depends on how long your legs are.
Yeah, my legs are short, so. Anyways, Matt Lewis, planning, no.
Planning and Development Services, Matt, Melanie.
Questions?
The M&amp;M's.
The M&amp;M's. A couple things, maybe we can clarify it, that I think some in the audience heard and some did not. One, we did, you know, there were, there were recommended changes, and then there were recommended changes to the changes, one of which was to remove the section about requiring that signs that came in as annexation be removed in five years because of the potential takings. We did suggest a removal of the six-month timeline on damaged signs. We did not suggest taking out a quick staff review. This is not a permit, just a review. For instance, if the whole sign has come down, we want to make sure that the same sign, in essence, goes back up, that it doesn't change in size, height, whatever. These kinds of things, we did because we were hearing from sign contractors, so we started looking at our proposals and went, okay, maybe we need to go back and look again. So we were trying not to go at this billy-nilly, but respond to what we were hearing from people. Other than that, there've been a couple things, for instance, for instance, the nit meter, we actually own a nit meter. That's because it was purchased because we were told that was state-of-the-art at the time. So the state-of-the-art changes a little. We try to keep up. Maybe we need to adjust again. The, one of the things that pushed this, and one of the things that is included in the proposed changes, is a greater separation from residential. That's because what we were hearing was the greater impact on residential. That's where we were having concerns brought to us. Electronic is different in potential impacts from static, at least in light spillage to, light spillage might not be the right word, I'm, I'm, my apologies, but it does shine out.
That's true.
Yeah, it does shine out. We hear about it from on-premise reader boards, electronic reader boards, those generate a fair number of complaints, too, because they are shining into people's property. I have notes, some of the research, there has been a fair amount of research done, you can probably find a study that, that supports almost anything you want to support. For instance, there are, was a study in the daytime where only 2% of accidents had to do with, or I might be misquoting a little, with sign problems, but they didn't study it at night. There's day and night makes a difference in what the potential impacts. But we have been trying to research that, and, and there are some studies out there, but there are some that support both sides. Removal, or not removal, but toning them down versus letting them go. What else?
Yeah, I think with the digital, how we, how we kind of got there was, you remember some of the comments were mostly from some of the neighborhoods that were kind of on a hillside or something that were looking down into the valley. It had some impact on them based, just because of a distance type thing, maybe not so much the spillage. It's specifically into, say, their front yard, there's more of a distance, oh, you know, that impacts me somehow.
Still impacts.
And so, yeah, and it's, and I think, again, you start, and we've done quite a bit of, we, we always do a lot of research and try to stay up on things, and like, like he's said, is, there's always one study, there's another study that refutes that study and so forth, and so you kind of come to that, that, okay, happy medium, if you will. But it, I, I think with the digital signs, if they continue, a lot of, a lot of the research I've done is like, okay, you can, a lot of companies like YESCO and some others, so they actually have like at 11:00 PM at night, and nobody's driving around, that they can almost turn those totally, totally down. Maybe that's some, you know, that, that, those are some options, other than, you know. So anyways, that's, that's just some comments on mine.
Are there specific questions we can try to address?
Questions, Council?
No.
Okay, doesn't look like it.
Certainly appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Very much. Before I proceed, I do want to thank everybody for your, for the most part, everybody's been very patient and very respectful, and that doesn't always happen in these meetings when we are, there's a lot of emotions, so thank you very much for, for your, for your patience and for being very respectful to everybody involved. With that, then, I declare the public, oh, yeah, we did this.
Do you want to answer?
Yeah, it sounds like we, it sounds like we want to be able to have some discussion. What do we, do we want to?
What are the advantages of keeping it open at this point? If, if we didn't make a decision tonight and we kept the public hearing open until our next meeting, what are the advantages of having it open versus closing it?
Would you like me to answer that, Mayor?
I would.
If you are looking to adopt one of the ordinances, one of the drafts of the ordinances that has been presented, this public hearing would satisfy the requirement for a public hearing for either of those drafts. If at some future time you decide to go with a different draft of the ordinance, you would have to have another public hearing anyway. So the advantage of keeping the public hearing open is it gives you the opportunity, if you chose to, to adopt one of the drafts that has been presented already for this hearing.
If you keep it open, does that give the council the ability to speak to and work with these people, with the sign companies, or does that, do we, does that constitute an ex parte communication which prevents it from?
It would depend on the format of that conversation. If, if you wanted to have another meeting and continue the dialogue, then certainly you would be able to do that under the public hearing that we're in right now. But if that resulted in a different ordinance or different provisions that haven't even been contemplated, then you would still have to have another public hearing anyway.
So you're saying the, make the amendments that was explained, if we have an ordinance prepared that way, and/or the ordinance that we've talked about, that's really the two options we have?
Exactly.
Without going to another public hearing?
Yes.
I personally do not feel that the best information is in writing yet. I would strongly propose that we have a meeting of the great minds to come up with a stronger ordinance than what has been presented in either case.
But in order to do that, you need to close the public hearing.
That's the direction. There's really no advantage of keeping the public hearing open, but that doesn't mean you have to close it. You can continue that dialogue in another public hearing and see how, in continued meetings and see how it goes. But based on what Councilman Johnston asked, there's a lot of advantages of keeping it open. Not trying to be vague, I'm just trying to give you all the alternatives.
Attorney, I suggest we close it.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and do that, then. I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, this item is before you. How do you wish to proceed? Do we need action, or just close it?
I didn't think we needed action, was there?
Well, the, the ordinance is on the agenda for either adoption or, or none, so.
Yeah.
I guess you don't for this agenda item, but you do. Thanks for that agenda item.
I, I badly would like to pass this, really bad. However, I, I, I look at a few things that maybe we could do a better job of putting into an ordinance, nits versus candles, and the appropriateness of the ambient surrounding light. So in order to do that, we have to do a totally different ordinance.
Well, I, I, with that, I'd, I'd make a motion that we do not approve the ordinance
So do we want just no motion to be made for that?
Well, is it a no motion, or is it a motion to not?
We don't have a motion, it just, it just dies, and, and then we.
How do you want to handle that?
How do we officially ask everybody to work with this?
What would you prefer, Jared, would you think, prefer they make a motion, or just not make a motion and that item dies and we look at it?
They have the same legal effect.
Okay.
There's been a motion to not adopt the ordinance tonight, so that can be acted on.
Hasn't been a second. Not been a second, you have to.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion to not adopt the ordinance as written, a second, a motion by Orr and a second by Johnston. Clear any discussion, Council? So Jared, what happens if we vote down this motion, but we don't put, vote another?
It would still die for lack of a motion.
Distinction without a difference.
Okay, hearing no discussion, then an ordinance by Orr, a second by Johnston. Could you please call the roll?
Orr?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Brown?
Yeah.
Moore?
No. Okay, the motion passes, and so in, the, the motion passed, the ordinance will not be changed, is that correct?
So it'll be, well, the ordinance will be removed from Agenda Item 15.
It will be removed from Agenda Item, so the same motion, the ordinance that we have now is, will remain in effect.
Yes, well, it's still under the moratorium, but will remain. Yes, well, it's still under the moratorium, but will remain in effect, the moratorium until that expires.
Until that expires, okay. And then, Council President Brown?
I'd really like to meet with the sign folks and see how we move forward. I don't know what that looks like, but obviously, I know there's complaints that we've done this over and over. Obviously, we're not getting it right, so we keep revisiting it. So let's figure out how to get this done. I may not be happy, and you might not be happy, but that's a sign of a good compromise. So, you know, I'm just planting the seed, but let's figure out how to get it done so that in four years, we're not sitting here doing it again, so.
And I would suggest that we find people in the community that don't make a living off of signs also, we could have involved in this, because I think that's how we are at the best result, is to have all people talking together.
Mark just got dragged into a committee, he doesn't even know it.
All right, let's move on to it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Then we'll move on to Agenda 15. 15B is an ordinance amending Title 15, Building and Construction of the City of Pocatello, Municipal Code to Adopt. We'll wait for a minute.
Hey, the sign guy left his umbrella. Mr. Young, you like, he left your umbrella.
How would we reach out?
We'll reach out to you, we'll figure something out, and we'll go. All right, if we could hurry everybody out, if we could hustle you out, if you're going to leave, that would be great. If you're going to not leave, sit down, please, and quietly listen.
You can't get your butt back up.
Mike is here. I don't know, Gary?
How are you?
Okay, well, we're going to continue on.
The game Zero was Zero, by the way.
Okay, thank you. Agenda 15, An Ordinance Amending Title 15, Building and Construction of the Pocatello Municipal Code to Adopt the Updated Editions of the International Building Code and the Existing Building Codes as amended. Counsel, how do you wish this ordinance to be read?
Quickly.
Quickly, by title on ordinance own.
Mayor?
Yes?
I move that Agenda Item Number 15B be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
One read.
We have a motion and a second motion, Bray, second by Johnston. Could you please call the roll? Connie?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Moore?
No.
Orr?
No. You lose.
It can't be read by, rules of suspension if we don't.
Got to have four.
You got to have four, or else we can't suspend the rules, and then you've got to read it three times.
Tonight? In three different meetings.
Three different meetings.
I'm just trying to extend my time on the council. I'm earning my $10,000.
So do you wish to change?
I will change my vote to yes.
Okay, thank you.
How long is this ordinance?
Not very long.
Okay, go.
Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, revising Title 15, Buildings and Construction of the Pocatello Municipal Code, more particularly by revising Section 15.02.010, Code Adoption, Section 15.020.030, Use Additional Codes and Standards, Section 15.04.050, Additional Provisions and Exceptions to be the International Building Code, Section 15.04.060, Additional Regulations and Exceptions to the International Residential Building Code and International Energy Conservation Code, Section 15.08.050, Additional Provisions and Exceptions to the National Electric Code, and Section 15.16.050, Exceptions and Additional Provisions to the Plumbing Code, and Providing that all other sections of Chapter 15 not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval and publication according to law, the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions having been dispensed with.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, shall the ordinance pass.
Bray?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Orr?
Does this have to be a majority, too?
We got it already.
Yes, okay, you got to enjoy it.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you for sticking around.
Thank you.
Agenda Item 15C, An Ordinance Rezoning Approximately 43.54 Acres of Property Located at 4075, 4105, 4141, 4207, and 4335 Hawthorne Road, From Residential Medium Single Family RMS to Residential Commercial Professional RCP. Public hearings on this matter were held on August 12, 2015, and October 1, 2015. Counsel, how would you wish this ordinance to be read? Councilman Bray?
Mayor, I move that the ordinance Agenda Item Number 15C be read only by the title and placed on final passage for publication, and only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Orr?
Thank you. Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, Changing the Designated Zone of 43.54 Plus or Minus Acres of Property Located at 4075, 4105, 4141, 4207, and 4335 Hawthorne Road, Pocatello, Idaho, From Residential Medium Density Single Family RMS to Residential Commercial Professional RCP, and More Particularly Described as Follows. 4075 Hawthorne Road, Warranty deed 20816765, The North 290 Feet of the Following Described Track, In the Southeast Quarter of the Southeast Quarter of Section 9, Township 6, South, Range 34 East, Boise Meridian, Vanette County, Idaho, Commencing at the Southeast Corner of Section 9, Thence North 25 Feet, Thence at Right Angles, West 25 Feet to the Point of Beginning, Thence Continuing West 482.5 Feet, Thence North 647.0 Feet, Thence East 482.5 Feet, Thence South 647.0 Feet to the Point of Beginning. 4105 Hawthorne Road, From the Warranty Deed 283661, Commencing at a 25 Feet West of 432 Feet South of the Northeast Corner of the Southeast Quarter of the Southeast Quarter of Section 9 and Township 6, South, Range 34 East, Boise Meridian, and Idaho, Thence Continuing South along the line, 25 Feet West of the East Line of the Said Southeast Quarter, Southeast Quarter, For a Distance of 216 Feet More or Less, Thence at Right Angles, West for a Distance of 482 and a Half Feet More or Less, Thence at Right Angles, North for a Distance of 216 Feet More or Less, Thence at Right Angles, East for a Distance of 482 and a Half Feet More or Less, to the Place of Commencing and Containing 2 and a Half Acres More or Less. 4141 Hawthorne Road, Warranty deed 99015726, A Parcel in the Southeast Quarter, Southeast Quarter of Section 9, Township 6, South, Range 34 East, Boise Meridian, Vanette County, Idaho, Described as follows, Beginning at the Northeast Corner of the Southeast Quarter, Southeast Quarter, Thence West 20 Feet, Thence South 216 Feet to the True Point of Beginning, Thence at Right Angles to the East Line of the Said Southeast Quarter, Southeast Quarter, West 482.5 Feet, Thence at Right Angles, South 216 Feet, Thence at Right Angles, East 482.5 Feet, Thence at Right Angles, North 216 Feet to the True Point of Beginning. 4207 Hawthorne Road, Parcel 1, East Parcel, Warranty deed 21217387, A Parcel of Land Located in the Southeast Quarter of Section 9, Township 6, South, Range 34 East, Boise Meridian, Vanette, Idaho, Described as follows, Commencing at the East Quarter Corner of Section 9, Township 6, Range 34 East, Boise Meridian, Being Marked by a 1-Inch Aluminum Cap as Described in Corner Perpetuation and Filing Record Instrument Number 20520368, In the Records of Vanette County, Idaho, Thence South, 00 Degrees, 15 Minutes, 46 Seconds East, Basis of Bearing per the Central Meridian of the East Zone of the Idaho State Plane Coordinate System along the East Line of the Said Section 9, A Distance of 100, 1,265.00 Feet to the Point of Beginning, Thence Continuing South, 00 Degrees, 15 Minutes, 48 Seconds East, A Distance of 165.00 to the South 1/16th Corner, On the East Line of Said Section 9, Being Marked by a 1-Inch Aluminum Cap inside a Survey Vault Described in Corner Perpetuation, And Filing Record Instrument Number 20321452, Thence North 89 Degrees, 22 Minutes, 37 Seconds West along the North Boundary Line of Lot 1, Block 7, Ward Park Subdivision, First Edition, And the Extension thereof, A Distance of 194.52 Feet, Thence North, 00 Degrees, 15 Minutes, 48 Seconds West, A Distance of 161.99 Feet to a Point on the North Boundary Line of the Parcel of Land Described in Instrument Number 20900969, Thence North, 89 Degrees, 44 Minutes, 14 Seconds East along Said North Boundary Line, A Distance of 194.50 Feet to the Point of Beginning. Parcel 2, West Parcel, Warranty deed 21300341, A Parcel of Land Located in the Southeast Quarter of Section 9, Township 6, South, Range 34 East, Boise Meridian, Vanette County, Idaho, Described as follows, Commencing at the Quarter, Corner of Section 9, Township 6, South, Range 34 East, Boise Meridian, Being Marked by a 1-Inch Aluminum Cap as Described in Corner Perpetuation and Filing Record Instrument Number 20520368, In the Records of Vanette County, Idaho, Thence South, 00 Degrees, 15 Minutes, 46 Seconds East, Basis of Bearing per the Central Meridian of the East Zone of the Idaho State Plane Coordinate System along the East Line of Said Section 9, A Distance of 1,265.00 Feet, Thence South, 89 Degrees, 44 Minutes, 14 Seconds, Perpendicular to the Said East Line of Section 9, A Distance of 194.50 Feet to the Point of Beginning, Thence South, 00 Degrees, 15 Minutes, 48 Seconds East, A Distance of 161.99 Feet to a Point of the North Line of Lot 1, Block 7, Ward Park Subdivision, First Edition, Thence North, 89 Degrees, 22 Minutes, 37 Seconds West along Said North Quarter Boundary Line, A Distance 69.51 Feet to the Northeast Corner of Said Lot 1, Thence North, 00 Degrees, 15 Minutes, 48 Seconds West along the Easterly Right-of-Way Line of Cammie Drive, A Distance of 160.92 Feet to the Northeast Corner of a Parcel of Land Described in Deed, Instrument Number 20900969, Thence North, 89 Degrees, 44 Minutes, 14 Seconds East along the North Boundary Line, A Distance of 69.5 Feet to the Point of Beginning. 4335 Hawthorne Road, Parcel 1, North Half, Northeast Quarter, Southeast Quarter of Section 9, Township 6, South, Range 34 East of the Boise Meridian, Vanette County, Idaho, Accept the Following Described Tracks. Hershey Property Per Agreement, Instrument Number 367875, Commencing at the East Quarter Corner, Section of 9, Township 6, South, Range 34 East of the Boise Meridian, County, Idaho, And Running Thence South along the Easterly Line of Said Section 9, 500.5 Feet to the Point of Beginning, Thence Westerly at Right Angles, 262.0 Feet, Thence Southerly at Right Angles, 210.0 Feet, Thence Easterly at Right Angles, 262.0 Feet More or Less to the Easterly Line of Section 9, Thence North, Northerly along the Said Easterly Line of Said Section 9, 210 Feet to the Point of Beginning. Interstate 15 West also accept. A Parcel of Land Beginning on Both Sides of the Center Line of Interstate 15 West, Project Number I15W-41073, Highway Survey Shown on Plans Thereof, Not On File with the Office of the Department of Highways and State of Idaho, And Beginning, And Being a Portion of Government Lot 9, Northeast Quarter, Southeast Quarter of Section 9, Township 6, South, Range 34 East of the Boise Meridian, Described as follows, To Wit, Beginning at the Northeast Corner of Government Lot 9, Northeast Quarter, Southeast Quarter of Section 9, Township 6, 6 South, Range 34 East of the Boise Meridian, Thence Westerly along the North Line of Said Government Lot 9, Northeast Quarter, Southeast Quarter, A Distance of 1,0346 Feet More or Less to the Northwest Corner Thereof, And Bearing North, 0 Degrees, 16 Minutes, 9 Seconds, East, 140.98 Feet from the Station, 840-31.54 of Said Highway Survey. Thence South, 0 Degrees, 43 Minutes, 51 Seconds East Shown on Record, To Be South along the West Line of Said Government Lot 9, Northeast Quarter, Southeast Quarter, A Distance of 251.02 Feet to a Point in the Line of Parallel with 110 Feet Southerly from the Center Line and Bears South, 0 Degrees, 16 Minutes, 9 Seconds West from Station 840-45.92 of Said Interstate 15 West, Project Number I15W-41073. Highway Survey, Thence South, 89 Degrees, 43 Minutes, 51 Seconds East along Said Parallel Line, 1,129.04 Feet to a Point Opposite Station, 851-74.96 of Said Highway Survey, Thence Continuing South, 10 Degrees, 43 Minutes, 51 Seconds East, 145.98 Feet to a Point that Bears South, 0 Degrees, 24 Minutes, 56 Seconds West, 109.90 Feet from Station 853-21.24 of Said Highway Survey, And Bears South, 89 Degrees, 41, 9 Seconds West, 60 Feet from 13-09.03 of the Hawthorne Road, Survey of the Great Separation Number 2, As Shown on the Plans of Said Interstate 15W. Highway Survey, Thence South, 4 Degrees, 14 Minutes, 46 Seconds East, 240 Feet More or Less to a Point in the Boundary Line Common to the Properties of Thomas, Arville, Wolverton, and John Keith Hershey, Thence Easterly along Said Boundary Line and Boundary Line Extension, 45 Feet More or Less to a Point in the East Line of Said Government Lot 9, Northeast Quarter, Southeast Quarter, Thence North, 0 Degrees, 18 Minutes, 51 Seconds West, Shown on Record, To Be North along Said East Line, 500 Feet More or Less to the Place of Beginning. Parcel Q, Parcel 2, Quit Claim Deed, Instrument Number 21708860, Part of the South Half of the Northeast Quarter of the Southeast Quarter, Section 9, Township 6, South, Range 34 East of the Boise, and Vanette County, Idaho, More Particularly Described as, Commencing at the East Quarter of Section 9, From Which the Southeast Quarter of Said Section 9 Bears, 0 Degrees, 15 Minutes, 48 Seconds East, 2,760.24 Feet, The Basis of Bearing for this Description, Thence South, 0 Degrees, 15 Minutes, 48 Seconds East, 714.96 Feet along the East Line of Said Section to the Northeast Corner of the South Half of the Northeast Quarter of the Southeast Quarter, Said Point being the Point of Beginning, Thence North, 89 Degrees, 46 Minutes, 2 Seconds, West, 1,317.36 Feet to the Northwest Corner of Said South Half of the Northeast Quarter of the Southeast Quarter, Thence South, 0 Degrees, 22 Minutes, 12 Seconds, East, 60.23 Feet along the West Line of Said South Half of the Northeast Quarter of the Southeast Quarter to its Intersection with the Existing, Then, Thence North, 89 Degrees, 46 Minutes, 36 Seconds East, A Distance of 1,317.20 Feet along Said Existing Fence Line to the Intersection with the West, or with the East Line of Said Section, Thence North, 0 Degrees, 15 Minutes, 48 Seconds West, 49.74 Feet along Said East Line to the Point of Beginning, That the Official Zoning Map be amended to incorporate this rezoning, Providing further repeal of all ordinances in conflict here with, And Providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval and publication according to law, The Rules requiring that the ordinance be read on three separate occasions having been dispensed with.
Apparently, the hiring process did not include the requirement for speed talk. I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, shall the ordinance pass.
Reminds me of John Candy movie, trying to be...
Bray? Yes, more or less.
Brown?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Orr?
Yes.
Wow, thank you. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 16, Discussion Items. This time has been set aside to hear discussion items listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this Agenda Item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's a 15-minute time limit, and there is 3 minutes per person. We'll go ahead and get started. Nikki Tason.
Nikki Tason, 4963 Yellowstone, Chubbeck. Article 4, Section 4 states, "The United States shall guarantee to every state in this union a republican form of government." Article 6 states, "The United States and the laws of the United, I mean, this Constitution and the laws of the United States which shall be made in pursuance thereof shall be the supreme law of the land." We just celebrated Veterans Day. Article 1... Article 1, Section 8 States, That Congress Has the Right to Raise and Support Armies, But No Appropriation of Money to That Use Shall Be for a Longer Term Than Two Years. Our Soldiers Have Been at War in the Middle East for a Long, Long Time. We've Lost Many in an Unconstitutional War. I Call on You as Public Servants Under Oath, Not Just to Support the Constitution, But to Uphold, Obey, and Defend It as the Supreme Law of this Land, And Our National Security, The Security of Our National Resources, And Especially the Health and Safety and Freedoms of Those You Serve Who Elect and Pay You to Do Those Things. I Know Some Who've Served in Those Wars. I Know What They've Experienced. We Have Some Coming Home Without Legs and Arms. Some Have Shot Each Other, Commit Suicide, For the Strict Purpose of Empowering Worldwide Communism Under Police State, And National Resources, And enslavement of Those That They Take Over. Our Children Are Taught at School, Grade School on Up Through the College, Right Here, To Praise My Friends' Work, To Praise Marx, Stalin, Mao, Islam, GLTQ Acceptance Awards Clubs Marriage and Military, With Cupcakes, STEM Corporation, Pollution, Invasion of Privacy in the Name of High Tech and Online Development, For Economy, Cities, and Population. We Have Communist Asian Africa, Middle East, India, Mexico, Europe, and Other Agencies and Nations in This, This Town, Teaching at Our College, Paid with Public Funds. To Recruit, There's Also Drug Trafficking From Those Lands. Some Own Land, Business, And That Money Is Then Sent Back to Those Nations To Act Against the United States of America and Our Forces, Who Are in an Unconstitutional War Fighting Against Those Very Principles. I Call on You, Before God, As My Witness, And Our Savior Jesus the Christ, And Every Dead Combat Soldier, Including My Great Grandfather, Starred as a Union Soldier in a Confederate Andersonville Prison, And My Boy Scout Who Earned a Purple Heart, To Do Your Job, That You Took an Oath to Do And Are Being Paid Public Funds To, To Call For Every One of Our Military to Be Brought Home by Thanksgiving. Yes, Thanksgiving, They Should Have Been Brought Home.
Thank you, thank you very much. We Appreciate Everybody's Attendance. Counsel, Appreciate Your Hard Work, And A Big Shout-Out To Our Attorney Jared Johnston For Reading That.
It wasn't finished.
Johnson. Jared Johnston For Reading That 50-Page.
Without Being a Bridge.
That's right, 50-Page Article, Thank You. Thank You Very Much, Jared.